Paul Thomas.
Present.
Jay Kilch.
Present.
Mike Brown.
Present.
Ralph Timmons.
Present.
Paul Watson.
Present.
Uh, Mel, uh, William Blapper.
Present.
You're welcome.
Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The United States of America and the true republic for which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we adopt the agenda, I would like to make a couple of changes. We're going to take off Sean and John Doyle for a later date. And I'd like to add some minutes. In the mail minutes. And then I would also, I'd like to talk about the mutual aid agreement. Anyone else? It was, but then she was told to come back. Who is Karen? Is she here? Were you told to come back tonight?
Yes ma'am.
By City Hall?
Yes.
Someone at City Hall?
Mayor, sorry, I'd like to make a motion to amend previous motion that we made.
All right.
And make amends to the, we made a motion that minutes will be published seventy-two hours after a meeting. We need to add after they have been approved. Close session meeting. We're going to just, we're already close session meeting. So the motion is amendment to the motion that after close session meetings, minutes are approved, that they'll be published seventy-two hours after that.
Upon approval.
Upon approval.
My phone, should we need a real phone?
Yes. Paul Thomas.
Yes.
Jay Kilch.
Yes.
Mike Brown.
Yes.
Ralph Timmons.
Yes.
Paul Watson.
Yes.
And William Blapper.
Yes.
As six to the, six to zero.
Now I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda as you suggested there.
I would like to do this first. This is the, this is a little something for thanking Waynesville for what they've done. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank and commend our sister city, Waynesville, for the assistance they have so graciously granted us in the recent past. Mayor Luke Hardman, the members of the Waynesville City Council, the city administrator, and now outstanding maintenance division have been of tremendous help to our community with several of our recent problems. This has been ongoing for three months. I want our citizens to know they have responded to our request for assistance under our mutual aid agreement without charging us anything for their time and efforts, and we are truly grateful for their timely and professional assistance. They are currently undertaking helping us with a major street repair that is beyond our level of expertise that will save us a great deal over having the state do it. And we really appreciate the spirit of friendship and goodwill they have exhibited toward our citizens. We look forward to working with our friends in Waynesville in the foreseeable future and hope the time will come when we can be of equal assistance to our sister city and its great citizens. It can truly be a wonderful world when a little help, with a little help from our friends. So, old Mrs. Let's take care of Karen Harsh first. Her bill was, she was charged, you want to get up and talk Karen? We have some new alderpeople and some of them don't know this story, that way.
We do, it was already addressed.
Oh, yeah, but then, what happened?
We voted to give her money. That's right.
Right? And what happened?
Well, I haven't received anything and I was told I needed to come back because it had to be approved by all of you now. We did that.
Okay, this was, let's see, something with the deposit, we did not ask for a hundred and fifty deposit, dollar deposit back at that time. It was, I believe, seventy-five dollars. Is that correct? What we were charging with the game, around that date. So.
Because I was told there was no records whatsoever that far back.
We do have records of what people have been charged for deposits, you know, back then. So it was brought to my attention and that's why I guess you were asked to come back.
Because I was told that when I bought it, I was a renter and I paid, I'm assuming, a hundred and fifty dollars. I bought the house eighteen months later.
Okay, so you have no independent recollection, honestly, of what the deposit was?
Back to two thousand and three, no matter.
How do we ascertain?
We did.
We, that's, it was, it was voted on because I assumed that's what the.
I think we need to leave it as it is.
I do too, because it's already been presented to the board to break refund under a hundred and fifty dollars. It's already voted on. It's kind of a mood issue at this point.
I'll make a motion that we give her the hundred and fifty dollars back. If y'all need another motion, they'll have a second.
Okay, and I guess a check should be written and left with Jessie to, for you to pick up during normal business hours. Can you ensure that she receives her refund? Okay, so let's get her a check written, leave it with Jessie. So what you need to do ma'am is when you go into City Hall, ask to speak to Mr. Fleming and he'll have his check written or have the check ready for you.
What day do I need to come back? I live in Crawford.
Anytime during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, I would suggest between nine and noon and one and four thirty.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Please for your time. Senatory Board, discussion with Leo and Jerry.
Hey, Jerry.
Okay.
Well, you know, we were expecting a working meeting this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, could you state your name and address?
Jerry Driscoll, Secretary of Thresher, Dickson Cemetery Association. The issue is, we're running out of money to maintain cemetery cut the grass. In 2015, we started working with the city, having ten meetings, trying to get resolution to this. It's like we had it solved a couple times in 2017 and again up until twelve April this year, the first week to make. And there's, there's something that comes up, gets pretty close to this every time. And in getting ready for what I thought was going to be a working meeting this week, I put together an information sheet, all we got here, source of area, all we got here is a long story. And there's some good information in here, and then attached to the budget, our annual report for the last five years, last six years. One of the issues that has come up recently that we just found out about is we own all the cemeteries. And.
He says we do.
Part of the problem is I think the city can't take care of something alone. But the Cemetery Association, it's been running out of money, we only have one option unless we can work for the city and get them to pick up the maintenance. And we thought we had that done. The one option we don't want to do is to file distribution papers. We do that, we no longer exist, the five member board is gone, and the records I have, I don't know what I'll do with, drop them outside. But you'll notice on the second page here, if you look, we've got funds enough with two pledges I've gotten for this year to cut grants the rest of this year. And I put an option down there, one, two, and three, and thank you for one of your ideas, Ms. Thomas. So if we, if we need to present something to the board tonight, I guess this would be it. We would continue our association, do this, sell any of the plots, the admin work, collect money, make deposits, and give the money to the city. The second part would, the city, would be the city, as we can work it out, we'll assume responsibility for maintenance of the cemetery. That could, might require the association to sign the deeds over to the city. And I don't think that's here at all. They don't, some of it, a long time ago, but it's been since given to the association. And that may have been in the late forties. The term association was formed in nineteen, or eighteen ninety, no, nineteen eighty-three, I'll get that. And if the city does assume, there are provisions in the R S M O for them to get voter approval for tax levity, and I'll leave you a copy of, I know you have a lawyer, but I'll leave you a copy of the applicable R S M Os. And it allows the city to accept. And if the cemetery is in this, it will be. And in general, we can get some formal work done, transfer the deeds, get through the voters. The final thing we could do would be, I'll put the chief paperwork, articles, ads, and the best that I can be throwing, I'll send letters to people that have plots in the cemetery that are still in the area. It's sort of like the old perpetual fund, they send a letter up, maybe you stopped that in the nineties.
Mr. Driscoll, are you guys, my chance, five oh one, C three operation, where people can donate?
Yes.
They are, they are, they are not a profit organization.
You'll, you'll see there's, I put in, on that annual report, I put the plot sales, donations, we don't, none of plots.
Did you say there was a perpetual fund established at one time?
A long time ago.
What happened to it?
And I haven't looked through with the pledges, where they sent pledges out, I was pretty sure on Saturday. And we asked for money each year. That stopped before I became a member, probably in the late nineties. I think it got too difficult to ascertain who's still here, who cares. And one of the things about fundraisers, a lot of people care about cemetery, because a lot of us won't be, be there at one corner.
Including myself personally, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board.
I've got my own radio.
Mister.
I know where one of the pledges came from. There were two one thousand dollar pledges, cost me nine seventy-five to get the grass cut once, so that's the money it's gone over the years.
And Mr. Driscoll, not to, not to cut you off, and I will let you continue to speak, but.
I'll let you go.
You, you and I met at my home, incorrect, and you presented the extracts and the deeds, and I, I had asked that the circuit clerk run the deed records to ensure, or actually to establish who is actually the property owner, and you and I looked through that and we ascertained that it was Dixon Cemetery, which was your association. Quick claim was done to Dixon Cemetery Association LLC, which is one of the same, basically you just quick claimed the name from one to, to establish Dixon Cemetery Association as a not-for-profit organization. So we established that, correct? And, and you provided me with information that basically the association is down to ten thousand dollars?
Nine, probably.
Nine now?
I just took the rest.
Okay, so, yeah, it's depleting quickly, and I acknowledge that. And also the fact that typically it costs the association nine hundred and seventy-five dollars each time that, that, that cemetery is mowed and we need it.
And it's been raised in four or five years.
Right. And, and that during the prime season, it needs to be cut probably twice a month, correct? Give or take?
Normally it's cut every two weeks, ten times a year, with a cut arranged, so it's cut on Memorial Day, so it works.
Right.
And you, I've had it cut this time, you're going to cut it later with them. Like I said, we can get through this year, but.
Right, but next year is, is a problem. And we also discussed at that time that you had approximately fifty thousand dollars in there and it reduced down to ten, ten thousand at the time that we spoke. And I had mentioned to you, just as individual concerned about the cemetery and the perpetual care of the same, that maybe the association tried to expand too quickly by buying additional property to expand the cemetery rather than maintain that money for perpetual care. I, I think when you spend twenty to thirty thousand dollars on property, you need to establish that your perpetual care for maintenance is in place before you expand, because that can deplete your funds quickly. And I had also discussed with you the sale of the plots at two hundred and fifty dollars. In my opinion, it's too cheap. I've bought plots before, and I've, I've never personally seen plots for sale for two hundred and fifty dollars. I commend you and your association for trying to do it chiefly to avoid cost to individuals or their loved ones, but when you take into consideration perpetual care, meaning you're basically going to have to cut that grass and weedy for that burial plot for however long, that's, in my opinion, way too cheap. So I told you from going forward, you and the association should discuss increasing the price of those burial lots or plots in order that you have a reserve to maintain the maintenance on it. And then also, I talked to you about fundraising, you said that you had done something at the Dixon Golf Club, Country Club, and cost you basically more to advertise it than what you earned.
And I have shipped it, I sent off a hundred flyers, pink red notes, and it gets, this is lion's talk and stuff. But as far as land purchase, if you go over there, you can't see open areas where there's, I can buy eight plots or four in a lot of cases, they're dispersed all over the place. There'd be very little sections filling it up, and so we bought that little piece just west, northeast, whatever, just past, and I'm not sure what we spent, but it was twenty thousand, that's two years of cutting grass. And you'll notice there we spend ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen thousand dollars a year, expenses, and that is a major expense. You've got two or three small things, even the insurance.
Absolutely, that is, that is your.
And no income, essentially. And you can see the income.
Right, and that's why I explained to you to, as a suggestion, to help your association, that rather than do your fundraising events locally, since you're a not-for-profit organization, maybe approach Walmart and, and ask for donations, you know, give, bake good items for donations, and I even told you I would contribute, bake good items, and help you as an individual citizen of this community for a couple hours to, to try to raise money. And when you label it as cemetery preservation, you know, a lot of people take that to heart because typically everyone in this room has a family member that is, or a close friend that's deceased and buried, and we know, I personally, having lost my son, know what, knows what that means to me. I'm not being heartless with your association, but we have laws that we have to conform to in regarding that.
And what's going to happen, despite of us having fundraised and things, is it's going to break and it's not going to be, and the city can.
It, it doesn't work that way, and I've done some legal research. It's, if the option is given to the city, if the city doesn't accept it, it goes to the county.
That's right.
If the county refuses to accept it, it goes to the state. If the state does not accept it, it is declared an abandoned cemetery. And we don't want that to happen.
There are rules on that.
That's absolutely right.
And our bylaws that state accept, if the city don't.
And the state, right.
I think it is important to clarify that the city will not use public funds to maintain something that it does not own.
That's why, that's why I said the deeds could be transferred to it, send to city limits and then, leave your word on it.
And you know, it gets really ugly here, and I, I'm just going to put this out, and I'm going to stress to the council here that this not be forced through, but the cemetery is under the same ordinance as the, as the nuisance ordinance. The city can actually go and cut the grass, bail the association for the grass, cite you with a nuisance, and that's under section two fourteen, point two zero five, point one. And I'll be honest with you, that is not my intent to do that to the association, and I would hope that the remainder of the board would also feel the same way about that.
Call somebody, point out, sorry, expense in as high as sixteen thousand, two thousand and sixteen.
And it's not on intention or desire to dissolve the organization.
Absolutely.
We can do it, then it's gone.
That's right.
And any records we have, any funds we have.
Has to be turned over.
It shows up at City Hall.
And then if City Hall says, we don't want it, they turn it over to county, and if county says we don't want it, they turn over to state, and if state says we don't want it, then basically we've got an abandoned cemetery within our limits, and you know, I don't want to see that happen.
I love those.
I don't understand what, because I can remember my mom paying, every year, getting a letter and paying, I don't know what she paid. Ever do.
I think before, before twenty-eight thousand, I think, I'm not sure.
And see, I'm sure.
Yeah, it was in nineteen, I think the first person, my mom, nineteen seventy-six.
And that would have all been implemented and drafted, I'm sure, through the association.
But why did that disappear? Why did they stop doing that?
Can't.
Because even if they can't find everybody, there's still people here.
Can't, I can't answer on behalf of them, you'd have to direct them.
I wasn't on board that time.
So what, so we can't, we can't accept any more questions at this time.
But that's part of my option, that we go do that.
You're welcome. No, thank you. No, I was just curious, because I can remember my mom every year making that payment.
I would recommend that we sit down as a working group to figure out specifically the process. It's not easy, some of the board members are.
And I'll be honest with you, Mr. Driscoll, no disrespect to you or to the association, and I told you that I personally, not on behalf of the city or the board member, I am very interested in helping your association personally, because there's, there's a lot of people in this community that have family members and loved ones buried there, and I'm sure they don't want to see it go to weed and unkempt and, and nothing happen. So I would personally like to speak to you later about some options to raise money for the cemetery, and maybe attend one of your meetings as a citizen, not as a representative of the city, to follow through with some ideas and see, like this lady mentioned, what happened to the perpetual care that notice was sent out every year to collect monies for that. If in fact the association had established a perpetual care, annual perpetual care, you know, that, that, that needs to be looked into, because that's money for your association in order to provide the maintenance that's so much needed, but.
I ran the preparedness, I said, twice, sixteen dollars a piece, I got twenty-five dollars back.
Right.
And that's not a very good fundraiser, but it was a job.
But location, geography is everything.
This is in Dixon.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I believe you need to get into a larger population.
You'll have to ask me at all meetings, because we meet third Thursday in March every year, unless we have a special, which we do on a.
Well, we, you know, if you have a special meeting.
I advertise that two weeks before the meeting. Over the ten years I've been there, we had one person show up, so.
Well, I would like to also be invited to the meeting to see what I can do just to help out this problem.
Good, I have a question. How, now that the issues have been brought out and we know the facts, how can citizens get ahold of you in case they have solutions, ideas, what helpful, is a good way to get ahold of you?
Or even just make a contribution.
I'm seventy-eight years old. I don't even have a face much as a. It's P L Box one five five, Dixon Reserve, Dixon Cemetery Association. Or you can call me, Jerry Driscoll, I am in the phone book, and I have a.
Write it down, Mark.
Five seven three five two eight nine two nine six. And I'll be in Mississippi Tuesday, this Friday, this week. And we're not happy we're in this situation.
They could push that.
Talking to the city, so.
And I'm going to be honest with you, Mr. Driscoll, from what I have researched and looked at, the only time that the city can intervene is if, in fact, it's becoming a nuisance. The city can intervene to cut it, but they can go after you, and if you don't pay, we're entitled to hire a civilian counsel to, in fact, flex. And that's, that, you know, your situation is much like the city, you know? And we're both between a rock and a hard place as to what we could.
That's why I recommended we do the fundraising, and continue. But what bothers me a little bit is we've been to the city since twenty fifteen, and saying we need to get together and figure this out. No one has ever said, we're not interested, we don't want to do it, we can't do it, we don't have money, we have no interest. We heard that the first week of May, we're broke. Decide that, you can't do it. Anyway.
The city doesn't have authority over your association, it's unfortunate.
Thank you, sir, for your time. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to tell you anytime, so.
Mr. Driscoll, I will be in touch with you with some ideas, and we'll see if we can make a community effort to join up or to get some money to, to help you. I personally will help you. All right, thank you.
Can I make a statement real quick?
Yes.
A year ago, last month, half of the council is saying they're now voted six to zero to do this. To help, so I think, I think they need to go back and revisit that. That's in the notes, I gave you a lot of. I mean, it's on YouTube, you can watch it live, but I think they need to go back and revisit. That's an open deal, I think.
But here's the thing, Mr. Carter's, we, if, if it's not in conformity, in compliance with law.
I, I understand that.
I am not going to assume a former administration's.
No, you can't.
Bad decision or judgment. I am not going to assume a former administration's bad decision or judgment, and, and you know, I, I looked at that, and I, I, I gave it thorough consideration. In fact, I've read what the meeting consisted of, but because a former council made a bad decision, I'm of the opinion, if there's bad decisions made, I'm not going to follow through them if they're against, contrary to law.
That's what I'm saying, I said, I think they need to go back and revisit that motion and rescind it. If they're not going to do it, they need to go back and revisit that. That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Driscoll.
Reminding me there.
Okay, we'll move on to the Waynesville Growth Alliance Committee.
Well, I think, I think personally, we need to give the, the association a definitive on that. And if, if it is our intent with this board to rescind what the prior governor, or board has done, I think out of respect to the association, to let them know where we stand, then we, we need to make a motion to rescind the former council's ruling on that. I think that's only right and fair so they know where they stand. I make a motion that, that we rescind that agreement because it was not in conformity to law and that the prior, um, council or board, um, exceeded its authority in agreeing to do the same.
Who's phones?
Yes.
City judges?
Yes.
Mike Brown?
Yes.
Merrill Simmons?
Yes.
Paul Watson?
Yes.
Vernon Blackburn?
Yes.
That's six zero.
And with that said, I want, I want you all to know, and all the citizens of the city of Dixon, by making that motion, that is not against the association. That is a fact, uh, that is to establish that the board felt that that was not done in conformity with law and that they basically overstepped their authority in making that a verbal agreement.
We understand that.
And I want the public to know that this board and everyone that I know here, sitting here, is not cold-hearted individuals, and we're not saying we're shunning and we don't care what happens to the cemetery association, because my feeling and belief is quite contrary to that. They have a problem with finances, just as the city does, and I think that anything that we can do individually, um, or that you can do to assist and, and, and get some money in to help donate, that would be, uh, in the best interest of everyone in the city, because that, that is the cemetery for the city of Dixon.
Now, the thing is, that's understandable, what you're saying, and I feel the same way, but that is a prime example of, with, with the council, that for one, nobody's, I mean, we have a lawyer, what was the deal with that? What are the laws on that? What, what, what do we, you're looking at the council, because the council know their ordinance. I mean, so here we come, we have a situation because of all that.
I can't answer for the prior board or the attorney.
Well, I'm, I'm.
That's an example now. Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
I only hear you talking, but I would like for, uh, Mayor.
Yes.
Tiltres to let me know now, since you made the motion last time regarding this issue, would you now say that you side with, um, the new council and you change your mind on the issue?
I did change my mind, because I do not understand all of the law.
Right, so we.
And our attorney, like I said, who have told us all of this. That's why we had him sitting here with us.
So it would be the attorney that would be, would have been in charge over the council, and he was supposed to know all the city ordinances?
Well, I really can't go into that right now.
No, I'm just asking you a question, that needs to be addressed, who has to know the ordinance, is the council or the attorney?
Actually, the attorney is to advise the council with regard to matters of law.
That's right.
The council loans on the.
You know something? Because right now we have one person that, that is talking, which is Mrs. Thomas, and she seems to know quite a bit about things.
She does.
And I'm concerned, and so does, but Mr. Brown, that is right.
Yeah, but, and, and the, but the same token, I'm not a lawyer and I cannot provide any legal opinions to this council. All I can provide to you is based upon my own personal research on this.
Well, I just wanted to have Mayor Tiltres, um, go on this topic, because it's a sudden change in, um.
We did have an attorney sitting here with us, we all depended on him to give us some answers.
That was probably the problem.
Shano knows that.
So, but anyway.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, can I just make one comment?
Yes.
To this effect, um.
Can you please say your name so that we.
My name is Cindy Wees. Cindy Wees. Um, back when we lost our daughter, perpetual care was offered through the funeral home, and we paid a fee.
Right.
And it was, I would have to pull my contract to know what that fee is, um, but we were told that was lifetime. So my question is, are the funeral home, is, is the funeral home offering the perpetual care, and if they are, is that money going to the association?
We would have no way of knowing, ma'am, because we do not handle any monies with regard to the sale of the plot. All of that is maintained through the association. The city has absolutely no interaction with the association whatsoever, they are a separate entity from us.
And I understand that, I just wonder.
But you have good questions.
The two hundred and fifty dollars would not be a lifetime care if you figure.
I don't know. I would have to pull my contract.
Well, we, we.
Something happens, um, on, on my family in Texas, where I have my son buried, and they run out of money, and so we all donate monies, that way, um, the families are always, every, the cemetery always looks pretty.
Right.
And that's the way we all live, so we have to donate, I think if we donate money, maybe that will help.
Is that something that you, you could go to the funeral home and talk to them about? Because I would think that they would go hand to hand, the association and the funeral home. Because somebody's gotta be responsible for it.
If they're collecting at the funeral home, is collecting money on behalf of the association.
People are paying.
They should be working, no, all right, you're shaking your head back here, Mr. Carter.
The answer is no.
The answer is no.
To that, the funeral home is not responsible.
No, I'm, I'm saying, is that money? I'm paying the funeral home for that perpetual care.
They're kind of a middleman.
Right, is that money going to them?
Since there were some legal issues a few years ago, that I won't get into, that's changed. They don't, they don't do anything. When you buy your plot now, it's through the cemetery association, it has nothing to do with the funeral home at all.
That money should go into the account.
Legitimate concerns and, and complaints, and, but this is something that cannot be addressed with us. We have no control over the association, but I would encourage you to speak to the association and, and to speak to the funeral home if they're, if in fact, collecting money for perpetual care. That would be my suggestion, but, um, there, you know, the, the issues moot with us at this point, because it doesn't involve us.
Thank you, thank you, Don Derry. The Waynesville Growth Alliance Committee is next, and Carol Carson, um, we put her on last year, and she would like to go on again this year, uh, and also Mike Brown. So we'll, we will have two people representing us from Dixon. Shall we take a vote on that? I'll make the motion that we keep Carol Carson on the, the Waynesville Growth Alliance Committee and add Mike Brown for another year. Go ahead, second.
I don't really know that much about that one.
What is it?
I don't, I don't either.
So, I, you know, it's not that I don't want to make the, the motion to second it, I just don't.
They give us like, they give us like sixteen or eighteen hours of, of grant time, that they will help us write grants, and they have also done, uh, a little help, done something to help us out that I will bring up at the next meeting. They help us, it's a good thing, we are members with them, and we need to stay members. And this is a good thing to be.
Jesse, could you add, for thirty seconds, could you briefly explain the growth alliance?
Growth Alliance pretty much, um, gives all the information within, uh, Waynesville, Carter, places I get, that, uh, things are going on, such as grant writing, and, um, whoever attends that, we're bringing back in the sheriff and the council, which makes, um, whoever's doing the grant writing or whatever else, um, easier to, um, reach out and get somebody to help them with that grant writing, or whatever, ever after, actually worked on at that time.
And they also have people, like two people from each one of our towns.
Better on the alliance board.
Yes, absolutely.
In order to attend, they have to, has to be in the minutes that.
Yes, that's why I'm bringing it to the.
Okay, well, based upon what was explained to me, um, through the city clerk and through Mike and Betty, I'll second that motion, because I could only, I can only see that it would benefit the city, for example, if there is a grant that is, um, being written or approved in another city that would also be, be applicable to our city, um, that would just make the way easier for us with respect to that grant. Um, and there's no fees or charge involved with being with this alliance, is that correct? No annual fees or anything? I'll, I'll second that.
I, I made a motion to keep Carol Carson on our Growth Alliance Committee, and also to add Mike Brown, um, for another year. We have to do this yearly. Uh, no, we're just, I'm, I'm going to.
Clarification of the motion.
Keep Carol Carson for another year, add Mike Brown, uh, so we have two.
And I second all of that motion.
Okay, um, if we can have some order, please, some silence, and then we can always ask questions afterwards, if you don't mind. So the next is the nuisance ordinance.
Before we jump into it, Mike, um, I know that we have several nuisance properties, the marshal, I saw him walk in. May I recognize Mr. John Tellis for, can we give you two, can we give him two minutes?
John Tellis?
Uh-huh, Tellis. Can we talk?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I have a couple concerns, and one of them is the nuisance property, uh.
Let me just talk about the nuisance today, we'll.
Okay. Uh, so I would just, not talk about that then?
Or just talk about the nuisance.
Here, the nuisance property. That's no surprise to anybody, you will, you drive around, and you'll see all these dilapidated properties, uh, there's safety hazards, the ISOs, uh, and I've been in, I've been a resident for twenty years, and, uh, been away for twenty years, and the main reason folks don't want to come, uh, to Dixon to live here, is because of those two things, the property and, and the, and the street. So, you know, if we can get rid of those dilapidated nuisance property, clean them up, maybe people start moving in, and they start moving in, start buying homes, and what does, what does that do? It generates revenue, you know, it just makes sense to get rid of them, so.
I agree, I agree, you have no argument with me.
We are working.
And I like, they quite speak to them, I guess.
So how does that get solved, because I've been hearing, we're working on it for ten years.
I did that two years ago for you guys, and I got lapped at.
Yeah, that's right.
I handed you the addresses, the owner's information, the mail, their mailing the phone numbers, and.
Do you still have this?
Nope, I turned everything over to you guys.
Who had you got? Who had you got?
Six previous councilmen, uh, excuse me, not, not this previous council, the one back.
Was there any particular person you handed it to?
Every one of them.
Every one, okay.
I was, I did tell you, she, she was at the time, was young already.
I have that list by chance.
I also had grant information, because Richland received grants, information to help the citizens of the community. Some of the citizens in town were afraid that if they, their place was condemned, even though it was falling down, that they would lose possession of the property. That's not always the case, and there's grant, grant money to help those, especially older folks that own stuff, there was grant money out there to help them, and I gave that information to city council also.
You know, at one time, there was no help from other councilmen.
Yes.
Now we have help with other councilmen.
Right.
We are working together.
Right.
That makes a big difference.
Well, I, I.
Now we can make progress with these burned down, knocked down, torn down.
Ugly looking.
And I know where you're coming from, and, and I have been sick over all of this, because we could not go forward. Now, that's in the past, and we're going to move forward.
Call Richland, call, what I'm saying is call.
I haven't even been over there, I spent the whole day over there.
Oh, good, so, okay, good, because that's where they got, they got approved, it was a big grant, it was a long process that they had to go through.
I was over there last year, I brought it back to the city council, no one was interested. Now we have a new council, we have people that want to move forward, and that's what we're going to do, so no more old, we're going to move forward. Thank you, and if you want to help us out, I'm enjoying the plot.
I hope you would.
Great, we need your help.
Good.
And several dates that we.
Chief, I just have one question for you, last time we spoke, you'd identified that there were forty-seven properties that it could be labeled as nuisance, is that still the case?
That was only.
And can you tell us how you started out? Did you go?
Started out based on complaints.
Right.
Um, and so we just, with the most severe. Here's the problem.
Excuse me.
It's a big, it's a big playing game, okay? Um, bottom line is, I've got to work with you and you have to work with me. I can't go do it all. If read the ordinance, it says I can serve notice, but the action comes from the council.
That's true.
The problem with this is, we have to have a plan, we don't have a plan. Do we, do we give door placards? That's my job. Do we send a first official notice? That's your job. Second letter, that's your job. And then what's the penalty face?
Citation.
Okay, so I'm gonna throw this at you. If I own a burned-out house and it's gonna cost me twelve thousand dollars to tear it down, the maximum citation fine is five hundred.
Each day you earn violation. Each day you earn violation.
As, as, you can't be, not in a citation world, you can find them if you have a separate action, but in a court of law, you don't be charged once with that crime.
Go ahead.
So it'd be, it'd be beneficial to me to pay five hundred dollars, and I don't have to worry about it again. Now, the, the, there's an administrative process, the council can see through taxes, fines through the city, whatever it might be, that's not a court action. So what I'm saying is, we, we have to be together on the same sheet of music by our ordinance before we even start this process, or I'm wasting time. And that, and that's where we've been. There, there's a lot of things that can be done in the meantime, I mean, we have refrigerators out there that kids can get in.
Yes.
We have places that need boarded up at minimal.
Okay, what do you want us to do to help you?
Well, I'd like you to address the ordinance in whole.
Five hundred dollars, that could be, uh, a fine.
That's the max, municipal files.
Okay, if they pay that five hundred dollars, what happens to us when we go?
What's the use of this, uh, something? A notice telling, they'll be a five hundred dollar...
Well, it's a much better course.
It doesn't matter or rectifying the problem?
Right.
Right, exactly.
And even if it goes to the court, it still stays in the system, you know? And we're getting all these burned down, knocked down houses.
All I'm simply addressing is there needs to be a process after the citation. Because this is where it stopped the last time. We sent out letters, we sent out letters. People got tickets and it stopped because there was no, there was no repercussion after.
That's what I'm talking, they call it a lot.
Yes.
Right, exactly.
And that's why I'm trying to explain, there's a process. It stopped at the five hundred dollar ticket.
Yes, there is. Missouri Revised Statute seventy-nine point three eight three. It says, "In addition," and I'm going to insert the word Dixon, "in addition to the city Dixon to cause the abatement of any nuisance, any person who fails to abate a nuisance after service of an order of abatement, whether the judgment be appealed or not, before a municipal judge, the person or persons in violation or failure, neglect, and refusal to comply with any of the provisions or requirements of the ordinance," which there is a ordinance in effect...
Are you reading our ordinance?
"...that such public nuisance continues, such person shall be deemed guilty of a separate and distinct offense for which he she may be again cited, tried, convicted, and punished as in the first instance. Upon successful prosecution of the cause of action, the city may be awarded by the court reasonable attorney fees incurred in accordance with Missouri Revised Statute seventy-nine point three eight three."
Saying that, that's not in our ordinance. That's why I'm saying we have to be on the same sheet of music.
That's right.
That's why it's state law, but what's the plan for the city?
The plan for the city, first of all, in my opinion, is to amend the ordinance to make it in conformity with state law. That's my thing. And that's something I think that should be done right away. Once that is in effect, then you can go ahead and we have action, civil action recourse. And not only can we ask for judgment to be entered against them, we get reimbursed for our costs and our attorney's fees in the process. So the city isn't out anything.
I'm just simply, who's weak? Because this stopped at a municipal ticket.
Right, I'm talking...
There was no process to finish this up.
Well, that, that, that was in the past and I can't speak on the past behalf, but I can tell you on my behalf and on behalf of my ward, the first thing I'm gonna move for is to amend the ordinance to make it in conformity with state law and then issue the citations and the notices in conformity with law and then if need be, to proceed with judgment and then if need be, to ask for recoupment for attorney's fees and costs incurred. And, you know, this ordinance thing and this, all this, all I can speak on behalf is myself, not of the court. But in the past, you know, I've heard about this nuisance thing, I've heard and heard and heard, I'm tired of hearing. I want action.
You, I'm the one who's...
I want action and I think on my behalf, let's make it happen. Because we all want to wake up and look out our door and see decent property. We don't want to see junk across the street, we don't want to see weeds up to our waist after we've spent all our time and energy to make our yards and our premises look nice and not including the devaluation of your property and, and just the public appearance of persons driving through, going to Jeff City saying, you don't want to suffer in that town, have you ever seen it? Now let's, let's clean it up.
I get that.
Thank you.
And all I'm simply, when I stepped up here, is to ask you to complete the process. Jesse can tell you, we've served a oompteen dozen letters, citations, and I get blamed because the process isn't completed.
It isn't you, you are just there to enforce what the, what the city man says.
Those people to blame say we're not enforcing.
I don't care what those people say and you shouldn't be worried with that.
There's a side to this, there's a council.
That's right.
And I mean, it starts at the second line of our city ordinance.
Throw it on my back, I don't care. They blame you and say, no, it's not my fault, I'm just there to enforce what the council said. No, I got big shoulders, throw them my way.
No worries.
We have identified forty-seven. Thank you. Forty-seven, we can go further. I think we should make a resolution.
How many letters did we mail out?
Is that just residentially?
When I went around with...
Oh, residentially commercial.
And how many letters did we send out? A lot, a lot. So myself and another gentleman came and picked me up and we went all over town getting addresses, looking in these old shacks, burned down houses and came back, sent them all letters, Jesse sent them out. And then what happened?
It stopped there.
And then it stopped.
Well, we don't know when they sent out...
So now we're gonna continue on.
Were they sent out by certified mail? Do we know they even got them?
By our city ordinance, they must be served by me.
That's exactly right, what I was saying.
But what do you do with the out of towners that own those properties? How can it be served by him if somebody out of town owns the property?
We need to pay for proper paper service to do it.
Awesome. I needed to make sure that was there.
So now, I'm sorry, I interrupted. What were you going to say?
I would like to make a resolution that makes the council develop an ordinance to amend nuisance properties and that we present it at the next standard meeting, the next standard agenda.
Seems like a long time.
Well, it is a long time, but to be honest, since it is amending of an ordinance, we do need legal counsel on that. I'll be honest with you, I don't feel too froggy to jump too quick without having an attorney to advise us on that, to make sure we are in fact in conformity with law.
Well, there in itself is a problem because our attorney that we have now, number one hasn't been around, number two, he's working on a different part of the nuisance ordinance, the trailer thing. And...
At one point, that's one too.
Yeah, all of it. So we don't even know where we stand with him right now.
Where's he at?
That's my point. We don't even know where he's at. But not only that, but we're gonna hire him this way.
He will come. He will come. If I ask him to come, he will be here at the next meeting. If you want to pay him, show him the money and he's asking. Why did you have to be here? Send him to pay the work.
No, that's true.
You don't have to come here.
We're only here.
Two hundred and twenty bucks an hour to come here.
No, we don't.
We might need more time on the issue.
We have matters, when you're speaking about the ordinance, that have to be, that are directly intertwined with the proposed amending of the ordinance that is regarding personnel. So we would have to go into closed session to address that. And I hate to say that, we are trying to keep as much transparency with the public as possible, but some matters that regard personnel issues have to go into closed session. And there is a matter that is, the ordinance is contingent upon a personnel matter. I'll just put it that way.
Do we even, have we even started up a nuisance committee yet?
We, we need to make a nuisance committee. I need you. All of us will. Yeah.
I know.
Leave your names with Marlene. Oh, we need to do it by vote, I'm sorry. Okay. Yes?
I'm reading this, it says the grass is seven inches tall. Now what happens? On going on vacation and you decide to give me a ticket. My grass is ten inches tall and the city dick out there is two feet. I don't think it's true.
That's why there's a process though. That's why I give the door placard.
Yeah, you won't get a ticket.
You won't get a letter for thirty days.
Also too, I don't think that's our issue. Yeah, that's not even our issue. And besides, I can't hardly, I can't use a weed eater and I can't eat emotionally. My ditch line is terrible and I can't afford to pay somebody, so. Your ditch line should be taken care of by the city. Both sides.
Yeah. The city's responsible.
Good thing you said that. Because I'd like to make a motion...
I worry, you guys have no idea, I can't worry about that.
I'd like to make a motion that we form a nuisance committee headed by Ms. Blackburn and show hands who wants to be on it. Whose purpose is to research the ordinance, research the laws and report back to us next council meeting with steps that they believe that we will be able to take to their knowledge.
And I think, since we're on the record, each person that raised their hand, please identify yourself by name, please. Starting with the front. Anybody in the front row?
Maria.
The next one?
Deborah Lutz, seven hundred West Fifth Street.
Thank you.
Mary Wagner, three oh seven North Allen.
Thank you.
Theresa Divas, K one nine West Fourth Street.
Donald Kraft, four oh four V Elm Street.
Donald Kraft, four oh four.
V Elm Street.
Anthony Campbell, six oh one West Chestnut.
Six oh one, thank you Anthony.
John Taylor, five oh four Andrews Drive.
Five oh four Andrews Drive.
T E L L E Z.
T E L...
T E L L E Z.
E L L C E.
Sidemetal.
Easy, easy.
Great third time's a charm.
William Carter.
William Carter, address?
Two zero eight North Nina Street.
North, Nina Street?
Never seen so many people.
Anyone else? Is there anyone else that raised their hand that we've overlooked? Go ahead, sorry.
I was wondering if you were gonna say something. We were debating whether you had a lady, so you're not...
I've got pictures of houses from ten, two thousand and ten.
State your name, please.
Greg Lee.
Greg Lee and your address.
I don't live in the city, so I don't know if I'm welcome on this committee.
I may not attend every meeting.
You have property in the city.
You have property here.
Tongue in cheek.
You guys have property here. The only thing you guys need to be aware of is that there are some town, the black native homes in town that are on county property, even though they're within the city.
That's true.
So double check that.
And we have to take into consideration properties that are also in probate court and that deal with real estate matters. You know, we can't step forth and, and lay demand if the matter is being probated or in probate court. So there, there are exceptions and things that we have to consider, for sure.
And I understand this committee covers everything, not just the lefty, the...
You made the motion.
Grass.
Grass.
People that are paralyzed, holding up with a two by four.
Yes.
Big soldiers.
Yes.
Mike Brown, yes.
This is, this is why the committee, to get the committee...
With Marlene.
Did you want to be a part of that?
Yes.
How, how's it going?
Yes.
Marlene Kimms.
Yes.
Marlene Blackburn.
Yes.
Regarding the nuisance, we're gonna make a suggestion to get the maps of the city, load them up and then look where all the properties are that are county and city and then go strategically and maybe we can meet and get together so that everybody gets a section or something.
And that's a very good idea. That's a very, very good idea because we need to ascertain if in fact it is city or county because we don't have jurisdiction over county.
And whoever's on the committee comes to see me because I've already identified forty-seven of the homeowners.
And are actually within cities.
Jesse needs to attend these meetings.
And also unless the...
Why haven't, hasn't Pulaski County addressed those properties if they're in Pulaski County?
Can't answer for the county.
They don't have, they govern them. They don't have ordinances to govern. They don't have courts.
William, what'd you say?
Ain't gonna happen. They're not gonna do nothing.
Well, they don't have ordinances. There's no force of law.
There's no way to enforce it.
Pulaski, county and city are completely different. City has ordinances, county is compliant with state law. And if an ordinance is enacted within a municipality, unless it does not violate state's law, we can adapt and enact ordinance.
Now, I think becomes an abatement, nuisance issue, I think the city could extend some authority to the county, forcible measures.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
If we fall into the arsenal of seventy-nine...
That's state statute.
One more question, one more question, please Anthony, and this'll be it, we need to move on.
Since it's the city's responsibility to mow the ditch line at the entrance to the cemetery.
I saw it, I saw it.
I've weeded it for the last two years, but...
Okay, I didn't see it.
I mean, I will help.
That's fine.
But it's an awful lot to weed.
We have broken down mowers, we have, we are going to get a lot of things done now. You'll be able to see the difference. If we need help, come on out and help us.
I'll help, if I see them, we...
But you're going to get some help now, okay? Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, on to Dale Lane.
Okay, real quick, it's been brought to my attention that Dale Lane, that there are schoolchildren who need to go through it, it's a safety issue. Several documents were pulled from Pulaski County and wanted to see, concerning Dale Lane, it was a lot of...
Are these all state copies?
No, I've been looking at copies that were in that area. These are my research files. During my research, I was unable to find any agreement concerning the closure of Dale Lane.
Would you like some information on Dale Lane?
My name's Patricia Williams, I live at two fifteen Country Club. Eighty percent of Dale Lane's on our property. We too have been before the council, probably six times in the last seven years, discussing Dale Lane. Dale Lane, when we first bought that home and we had our survey done, we discovered, and the surveyor is the same one that did the surveys for all your streets, same fellow.
You know his name by chance?
Oh, I do, I do. His name would be Jason Wors. Okay? He's the same guy that did all the stuff for your sewer project. We paid for a separate one just to figure out what's going on with Dale Lane. Because it came to our attention that the surveys, all through that addition right there, have problems. If you approach it from one side, the property goes five to seven feet in one direction. If you read it from the other side, it goes five to seven feet to the other direction. Okay, about this time when we checked our home, Doug Rome has the rent house that's next to mine. Okay, if we go to the one direction, five foot of his house belongs to me. We all checked the records and the city, quite some time back, determined, like ten, fifteen years ago, that all the readings would go the opposite direction so that people like myself wouldn't own part of somebody else's house. Okay, because of that, that kicked over seven or eight feet, something like that, into Dale Lane, which is that alley that kind of just achieved itself through there. It was never assigned, it was never deeded, people initially walked through it, then people started driving through it and then it was given a name sometime, but Dale Lane itself, the deeded piece or the easement for that, is on the other side of those oak trees. So... Okay, if we go to the one direction, five foot of his house belongs to me. We all checked the records and the city, quite some time back, determined, like ten, fifteen years ago, that all the readings would go the opposite direction so that people like myself wouldn't own part of somebody else's house. Okay, because of that, that kicked over seven or eight feet, something like that, into Dale Lane, which is that alley that kind of just achieved itself through there. It was never assigned, it was never deeded. People initially walked through it, then people started driving through it, and then it was given a name sometime. But Dale Lane itself, the deeded piece or the easement for that is on the other side of those oak trees. So here's my house, here's what you call Dale Lane, here's the row of oak trees, here is the piece of land that has the easement that your little children need to walk in where you say my walkway there's unsafe, which in itself is a bunch of, hmm, yeah, is not even close to being unsafe. I can't imagine why that would. It's been everything from unsafe to too far for people on the street behind me to get to Country Mart. I mean, the list goes on and on.
Patty, I know for quite some time, there was a lot of discussion going on with the previous, uh, council, and John Doyle was involved in that quite extensively. What was his take on that?
His take on that was that Dale Lane, as you guys recognize it, is not a viable throughfare. At my upper end, um, I think two feet of it falls into actual city park. As you get behind me, the house behind me, that entire road is gone and into the tree mark. So it kind of goes in an angle. You follow me on that? So the lady behind me, you were a hundred percent on her lane. Mine, you're only eighty percent right there at the street because it kind of flared. John Doyle's thing was, if you want to open up Dale Lane, you gotta go on the other side of those trees and open that whole stretch up. But to do that, you have to take out the trees because the trees fall in the easement.
I think my understanding was you didn't want the trees removed.
No, I really didn't want the trees removed. And what we volunteered at the time, which your council elected not to act on, was we volunteered to cash to open up, is that sunrise behind me?
Sunset.
Sunset. Open up Sunset, take it through that piece of land, put a piece of road this way, a piece of road over to High Street where he lives. Everybody could come and go. But that was not a good plan because we needed to open up that alley instead. Nobody wanted to take the Eads money, let's just tear open the alley.
It was supposed to be an alley, or I understand that it was an alley all along.
You talking about Dale?
Which you closed off.
No.
It was an alley that went all the way through.
No, that's a misconception. There's an easement, but it's on the other side of those trees.
It was, it was an alley before you closed it.
No, it wasn't. It was a throughfare that people created by walking and driving. So I could create that right through your yard right today and if everybody did it for ten years, then I can say that was an alley, Betty, and it is a land. And you're gonna say, no, it's not, that's my yard. So.
Was there some kind of a suggestion, I'm sorry?
Oh, no, no, go right ahead. It's been seven years, sweetheart.
Was there a suggestion one time to take this Sunset straight through to where it goes by Quentin's house in the.
Not even to Quentin's. It would go because then we'd have to go through.
But wouldn't that have been an option?
No, can't, can't get through there because there's property owners there and there's no land through there.
I see, okay.
We were gonna take it to the, like, Sunset would go up and then tee. And.
What happened there?
What happened there was we bought into the land that the cottage, that little house sits on, and at the very same time, our former mayor, who I think you know, he bought, um, he contacted the lady who owned it as well, and each of us own a fifty percent undivided interest in that property. So I own it, you own it, and we could put that road through there if we all agreed, you know, whatever. But as it stands right now, absolutely not.
What's, what's your suggestion? I'm just curious.
My suggestion is, don't even think about opening up Dale Lane because I can tell you if you do, it's not gonna work. That's my suggestion here. My real suggestion would be to send Sunset or Sun.
Sunset.
Sunset out, like we offered five years ago. We even had it set up to put the dirt down, the gravel work, everything. Yeah, and bring it out and let it connect his street.
High Street.
High Street and then bring it in off of Country Club.
That's how.
Yeah, so the people behind us could get out.
And that's to the side of Helen Bidler's home.
What?
That is, are you talking about to the side?
It would not go to her house, it would come behind Quentin's house. It would go like, if this is my house, it would come this way and there's that house. It'd go behind that little house and behind Quentin's house. So it's gonna turn and go that way, and it would connect into High Street over there.
And you're okay with that? You're okay with that?
I'm thrilled with that. And John Doyle even had the specs so that it would be to code, so that it would be to county regulations, everything.
Where, where are, where are those notes?
The former council has those notes. I do believe we have a copy. I'd have to get the check, he's in Virginia right now. But, uh, yes, but we were basically told flat out, your money does not buy a road here, period. So. Oh, and what, and what is that safety issue, by the way, for these children? I'd like to know. Have you looked at Dale Lane?
So this is, this was brought up because of, one, Dale is a table item, and then it was mentioned. So if anybody could also, I would like them to speak, if they know, if they could expound upon the safety issue, because I have.
Yeah, what is the safety issue? Because it is a throughfare, you can walk it. Go ahead.
We're asking for information here, that's what we're.
I understand.
They actually opened that. I was in first grade, my babysitter lived at the end of Sunset, Delmer Bean, the property behind you was Murphy's. They actually opened that up for all the kids to walk through.
To middle school.
I'm sorry?
The homeowners opened that?
Yeah, Delmer Bean, which he's long gone, all everybody that's been involved are all friends now, but they opened that up because there's no sidewalks over there. The bus would dead end on Sunset, so that whole road, both sides of the road was kids. We would all walk through that opening. Delmer Bean, they cleared that, I remember, when I was a kid. They opened that up so the kids could go through there, and we stood right there by your house.
Yeah, I keep it mowed all the way through.
Can the kids still go through there?
Absolutely.
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 It looks very nice.
Not today.
That was.
Yeah. Yes.
That was in seventy-eight, so.
No, ma'am, we didn't have any problem with people walking. Oh, no, I've been out there and I've set it up for the teenagers to go through. If you ask, the teenagers know who I am, I talk to them. I'm all fine with foot traffic. I just don't want somebody's big duly two foot off my kitchen window. And I don't think you guys do either.
They were driving through your yard before you moved in.
Yeah.
That was always the issue.
Yeah.
And that makes sense to me.
But would there be a liability issue to her? What kids got hurt on?
Well, it depends if it's.
No, any different than if they walked through your backyard?
It's.
And I'm a risk taker. What the hell, let's do it.
If she's got property insurance.
That's right, that's why we have homeowners.
It should be covered under that.
I'm just trying to protect her.
But I'm trying to ascertain in my mind, and I haven't seen this, so bear with me. I'm, I'm not even really sure if I know where it's at.
It's easy to see. There's two posts at the end of what used to be Dale Lane on each end because Quentin's group, when we mentioned it the first time, they came out the next day, put two steel posts in the ground and a cable across it.
Exactly, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, and, so.
I need to see it. So is, is, the boundaries was, was the problem?
That's the little property next door with the house on it. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. It's my understanding that. The property that we're speaking of, you are saying that fifty percent is owned by you and fifty percent by the city?
No, separate piece. We're talking about the, that's the piece where we volunteered to, let's work together and put a road through it. That's the fifty-fifty split. Dale Lane that we're talking about, upper end, I own a little over eighty percent, my neighbor in the back owns a hundred percent. It kind of just flares out. So. And the city has about a twenty percent little easement on one side, but it includes a row of.
So it dead ends basically with the city's easement because it goes from twenty to eighty to a hundred percent?
Now wait, it dead ends because you close that off and no one can drive. It was never, it was never a lane anyway.
It was never a road.
It was never, it was never.
It was an alley.
No, it was never an alley. An alley has to be designated as such.
Right.
Am I correct? You have to have something on your records that say, this is an alley, this is a road, this is this.
Just like behind my property, that's Magnolia Alley. And I know it continues on across the street, but let's just face it, that's over by Susan Durbin's, there's a creek and, and trees, so I don't know how that alley can continue. So this Dale Lane is not an alleyway?
No.
And it's nowhere on the city records showing that it was in fact an alley?
We need to get with the county accessory and get a plat for that.
Well, yeah, I know, I've got to look at it.
Would you like me to bring copies of what we paid for for that to the council for maybe the fifth time?
You're dealing with a new council.
Oh, yes. How many times have I heard that? Not all of them. I'm looking at a couple of the same ones.
How long is Dale Lane platted? It would be.
It's not a lane.
It's not a plat. It's shown as a throughfare, it is not platted. Do you not understand what we're saying?
Was it platted in the original property business?
No, it was not. No, it was not.
Well, the only way to find out would be to get the original.
Feel free. This has been researched for seven years.
This has been researched for seven years.
But feel free.
You are not listening.
We are listening, but we're looking at the plaits of all this.
Okay, do you see a, what does that plat show?
A Dale Lane, and it runs very close to the house.
Um, yes, I have seen this before. And.
I understand what you're saying, so the only way to make it viable. Yeah, I can see the trees, yeah.
Uh, I can bring you the surveys that we have, I can bring you the class that we got from county, I can bring you guys all of them.
Now, it's some of this, uh, land, it's, or the alley, whatever it is right now. I understand that a lady owns property that is in a nursing.
No, that's incorrect, on the link.
The lady that's.
She's talking about. Yes, and we found the next again, that's how we got the. So, that's where we're parked.
And I hate for it to be changed again, but I, I, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm not in, I'm not in a position. I, I don't know, I haven't seen the land, I, I haven't been able to, uh, had the opportunity to look, um, to see what these are, discerning, to see what's, you know, that's several. So I need to look at this for my, to see that I'm understanding.
Just so you're not. I see a light. Okay, now I'm going to add. Oh, there it is. Since the very last time, the place, the time before last, uh, of the, like, eight trees, one has been poisoned, another one has applied. Poisoned one is about ready to drop. Uh, it is possible it will fall on my house, so I guess this comes into. So, we have a tree that needs to be pounced, so we need to decide to take it out or do not.
They're here, baby.
They've been there a hundred years.
Yes, because we went, we had conservation.
And if there's any damage to this dog, it's a result of that tree, it's really responsible. And we're not gonna show that responsibility. But it's never served. Interesting, the charity is just.
By John Doyle.
No, 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 he's not serving, Elgin or someone.
Jason Lawrence, you guys should all do your super stuff. Super surveys. All the other, you can take one for the wall, the alley, the separate one involves the little house. Yes.
I can give it on audio?
Okay. Uh, if you mind, because I need to.
Yes, very next. I think by then we should pretty much have a, a good idea of what we're looking at, and that gives me a chance to look at the property and come out to speed with what's going on here. Yes, and.
Then I hear the other side of the story. Thank you.
It's called next meeting.
No, we want, we want to get this, and, and I'm hopeful by.
Can you have made a view?
We'll, uh.
It is, it's not right now.
We'll get it, we'll get it resolved, and this, I, I promise you it's not gonna be.
We can't throw that little house property incident.
You'll have to look at it.
There's two of us, and I, I rely on that, so it's now, Dale Lane issues, next one, and then we'll.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning it again. Thank you for mentioning it.
Just one question, that land, on that little house, where's that little house, is that your land?
That's our land.
Okay, okay, that's all I learned. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we change this to the next standard meeting, next regular meeting.
And then we're going into. No, but we are going to take a five or ten minute break. Okay, we're gonna go first.
Appreciate that. Appreciate your support. Yeah, we thought it was all, somebody came to open it up. I'm just gonna tell you.
All right. Five to ten minute break. Have you renewed business licenses? Yes, you need to order. You've seen it, I've seen it.
I haven't.
Oh, yes, I have, yes, I have.
Yeah, he comes in. Anyone that does not, um, live in the city, doesn't have a business, say.
But still provides service.
But still come in to bring service to people, um, they need to get a, a business license, every. That does any business at our.
Okay.
A and A, is that it? A and A?
Yeah.
This is, um, Dixon, they do, they do service.
Septic service.
The septic, is that our?
They pump our slugs.
Okay, that's our people that's, that's why we have.
Oh, okay.
Thanks a lot. Ashley Small, and others, who are in an operation for... So, we have one for, um, you wanna approve these together or separate?
I'm with them together.
Okay, okay. You have, um... Property Heating and Cooling. And... A and A Incorporated, and... The Appraisal Company. I'd like to make a motion that we accept these three businesses. Call call. Or just hands?
Barbara Thomas?
Yes.
Amy Toots?
Yes.
Michael Brown?
Yes.
Grant Thomas? Paul Watson? Um, my name is Mike.
Yes.
All three, S sixty zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are the dog license. We have been charging five dollars for a dog license. Every dog in the city limits needs to be licensed from the city of Dixon. And now, it has gone up to fifteen dollars, and they... You need to check your dog license and see if they're due, please. And I'd like to make a motion that we increase the dog license from five dollars to fifteen dollars.
Barbara Thomas?
Yes.
Amy Toots?
Yes.
Michael Brown?
Yes.
Grant Thomas?
Yes.
Paul Watson?
Yeah, my question is, is this effective from January to December each fiscal year?
It has been different months of the year in the past, so...
Based upon when you've got your license?
Mine was in May.
Well, see, I got mine last year, but they say it's due already. They sent me a notice in January.
So, it's just, it would be due when your dog, unless we're... Unless y'all want to start from the beginning of the year.
I would just... I think it's easier just to start from the beginning of the year, go through December thirty first of the fiscal year. That way, we're not keeping track of every month whose license is due. All become due at the end of the fiscal year. If it is mid-year, I suggest that we do a pro rate on it. Somebody comes in six months into June, we do a pro rate on it and do it seven fifty. Somebody comes in on December thirtieth, hey, wait till the first. We're not gonna have a problem with two days, you know? Let's, let's be realistic. We're not here to gouge.
Right.
Who keeps, who keeps track of the license anyhow?
The collector.
I went and asked, and she says, oh, I don't have them.
Well, maybe she hasn't been informed on that. But people will start coming in, including Betty.
Uh, what's twenty, what's the reasoning for going up to five to ten?
I think that's...
Why not five to ten?
It's been five dollars forever.
I know.
And it's time to raise it.
Okay, why not five to ten?
We decided on fifteen. It's, yeah, it's passed.
What St. Robert charge? What does everybody around charge?
Um, I've seen some municipalities as high as twenty-five dollars. I would ask that we, with that motion that was made, I would ask that the motion be amended to include a pro rata payment based upon the time of the year that the applicant is applying for the license, i.e., if it's June of the year, that they only be charged seven fifty. And that's easy enough to take... Divided by the number of months in the year to establish what it should be.
When I get my rate, when the dog gets his ready shots, like this next weekend, that's when I usually got the...
Right, and that, that helps those individuals that think, well, I don't have to pay until August, as you... So, we will make this effective January one, twenty nineteen.
Okay.
That, because we're not gonna gouge you again. It's not right.
Yeah.
And, um, if yours is due now...
Security, and I feel like they're getting nitpicked for a little thing now.
Right.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
The city's fiscal year starts October one. I would, I'm just a suggestion. Whenever the city moved the collection of the taxes to the county, that hurt a lot of our elderly and fixing home people here. Because a lot of times, they would pay their county tax, and then they get their city taxes paid by Marchable with a small fee. Well, since they collect for us now, they're hammered hard, Jan-, December thirty first. Why don't you... If somebody has a little dog or something, another twenty-five bucks, why don't they do it October one?
I think it's just easier because we're not running the fiscal years in with real estate taxes and all the other taxes.
Well, I know, but I'm just trying to offset the costs.
Right, to create separation, but now, what we're asking, if somebody's is due now, it's based on the fifteen dollars, and then we'll pro rate it to the end of the year. Then effective January one until December thirty first, that's what the fifteen dollars make.
So, what if they don't pay it in January? Then what?
They don't pay it, then we'll issue a notice to them that it's to be paid. I haven't researched it, and if we can levy it against their personal property tax or whatever, uh, as things, then I'll look into that, decide what way we can levy against that. And since the county maintains that, it would be very easy to do.
Yeah, I just think that's how they could offset it.
Right, how to enforce it and affect it, affect it, yeah.
Yes, how are you?
My, my question is, um, how can we figure out who has a dog? Because at this point, only people who are honest will go and go back to paying this, you understand? Because a lot of people here have dogs.
That's what we have to go, that they will be honest. I know you're gonna pay for your little dog, and I'm gonna pay for mine, and Barbara's gonna pay for mine.
But, uh, how, how...
And if we see some dogs that don't have tags on them...
We write lots of no city tag tickets. Two people that we find.
My dog is too small. He doesn't wear any tags at all.
It's not a matter of wearing, it's a matter of having tags.
Right, yeah.
I made the motion to amend it. To include the fiscal year from January one to December thirty first. And tags to be administered on a pro rata basis, to be based on the month of the...
Um, Gary. Yes. Okay, grant writing committee.
So, recently, myself and, uh, Mr. Robert, who's available.
Robert. Sure, Robertson. Can you...
Can we recognize you for a second?
No. No.
Okay, no.
Okay, that's good.
So, we would, we, we intend, or you, you can come up.
I'm good.
Okay. Uh, we went to a grant writing class. There's a lot of grants out there. Uh, and because of the knowledge that we've obtained, we'd like to form a grant writing committee. I, myself, would be the chair, and then we have several people who would like to volunteer. Robert and Ms. Watson. And we have, we have one other. So, the, anyone else who'd like to write grant with grants, I don't know if you volunteers?
I would use volunteers to help research and look at programs.
There's a lot of work, there's a lot of grants out there, but there's also a lot of work. Oh, Maria wants to volunteer, too.
Maria. Are you asking a question or volunteering, Maria? Are you asking a question or volunteering?
He's a volunteer.
For you.
You, Maria. You had your hand up.
Did you raise your hand?
Yes, I would like to definitely pass some things here.
To be on the committee? Okay, Maria.
So, grants, a lot of grants, the work is in the writing, because you can write in evaluation, CPA work. You can ask what you need to help manage your grant. Uh, one important thing is, we will need somebody on the council to be an evaluator. And my suggestion is Barbara Thomas.
Well, let us act in your place.
Well, with the grant writing and research, and I understand the, the public's help to want to participate in that, but there are some, there is some information that is highly sensitive.
Yes.
Um, that I'm afraid the public cannot be privy to.
Now, the, this process does require that we pick somebody in the city who's a city employee, and they're to handle anything that's sensitive. Plus, they have to sign off on anything that's submitted. It can't be someone on the council, and it can't be a citizen. It has to be a city employee.
That's to set up the grants.gov, uh, website, look at getting into it.
And it would probably be, uh, the best to have someone in a supervisory position, honestly, that would know the data and the information that would need to be collected in order to submit onto that grant.
Can we have a volunteer?
Paul Watson, lady.
Nate?
You can't volunteer.
It is, now, it is, everything entered in. Correct me if I'm wrong, Robert, but it's, it's through the computer.
Yes, everything can be filled out through the computer.
Right, and the information that we would probably need would be in a supervisory capacity. The supervisor that would hold that information. With regard to figures, numbers, uh, testings, so forth.
Basically, they, they do ask for budget figures and like that. That's, uh, should be readily available for, actually, the public, too, if I were to say it's indicated.
But we could just fill out whatever we can, and then it passes on to... You're saying pass it on to them?
Absolutely. I'm not diminishing or undermining the help of individuals with the grant research or writing. But I just want to make it known that there, there is some information that is sensitive, that's within the application process, that may not be available.
To the most part, it is probably available stuff.
Right.
Ninety-nine percent of it, probably the public has. Really, we need to have somebody who's, who's gonna be the city employee who can say, okay...
Gary.
I was gonna ask Mr. Brown, if anybody's researched grants.gov already to see if City Hall has one? Because we do, as the police department, we have a DUNES number, and we, we are set up on grants.
Right.
But City Hall is separate. So, there would, there would probably have to be a designated on both sides.
That's right.
And access to the account numbers and stuff.
Now, it's gonna take a month, whoever the city employee is that we designate, it's gonna take them a month to get all the numbers that they need. It's not only do they need a DUNES, but they also need a SAMs. There's a whole bunch of stuff that's...
That's right.
Now, once they have all that stuff, that's when we can begin to submit for grants. Now, the professor that talked to us about this, she said that there's a lot of money out there for cities underprivileged towns like us. But we have to be tapping into it. Now, grant writing is an art. An experienced grant writer gets about one in four. Brand new grant writers, a lot less. If you don't get a grant, you never submit. Now, I'd like for us to submit it to as many as possible, but that's where we need the help of citizens.
Well, and it definitely needs to be a supervision, because you can't just, we, we've gotta have regulations here and rules. You can't just go submitting for every grant out there, because some of them are matching grants. To be honest with you, I could put in for some grants right now, but you're not gonna wanna match them.
Yeah, we have to be...
Or you, or don't have the ability to.
We have to be very careful with the types of grants that are...
So, before we even submit them, I mean, there should be an approval process.
Well, we can, sir, on grants.gov, you search whether you want matching grants or not matching grants. So, we can refine our searches.
Now, please understand that there's a possibility of us being able to match with ser-, match with service hours. It's a twenty dollar an hour rate. So, if someone's willing to give their time, that's twenty dollars an hour of what they're giving. It doesn't have to be dollar.
No, it can be in kind.
Well, it's gonna be grant specific.
Right, and we know that, and that's what the grant committee is open, the grant committee is to... But here, as a council, we need to decide which city employee is gonna be the responsible, who's responsible city employee for submitting. It, it's basically a review and a submit, and then if you form a committee, they'll submit everything to that employee. Once a grant is approved, we can hire a lot of the helpers. It's really easy, the evaluation process, because we'll hire, we'll write into the grant, everything we need to get evaluated. There just needs to be somebody on the council that's outside of the grant committee who's part of that process. So, if I'm on the grant committee, it has to be somebody else who's on the part of the evaluation process.
Any specific area you're trying to target for money? I mean, that's, that's a broad statement.
Well, that's one thing we need to, need to be, and I think the council needs to just get together and discuss it with the citizens, is to find out what, what areas are we needing help in, and what grants are available to help those areas.
There's a lot of stuff for kids. Especially this for health.
Health and, health and... Health is a lot, got a lot of money, I agree. They, they brought that up.
M and Mars will give you tons of money if you give it in. Budweiser actually gives a lot of money for...
I'm gonna clarify some things, so we have to have a city employee, and the city employee can... We can just, somebody in the city can evaluate as well. We can look at that. Do you remember evaluation, they said it should be someone on the council, but they, we could just write it in and go off to the third party.
We, we can go off with a, you can go off in the third, get someone.
We could just third party.
And MSU and like that said that they, where we took the class, said if you can write it in, they can actually provide the, as part of the grant, the evaluators.
Whoever's involved in the writing process can not be a part of the evaluation process.
Would you be interested in that?
Being involved in the evaluation process?
No, you, everything but, but the evaluation process.
Oh, that's fine, yeah. That's fine, that's not a problem.
And then, Mike, you are from the council involved with that.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll chair it.
Okay.
And then we have, we have Robert, we have...
Maria and Delane.
Delaney.
It's Delaine.
Delaine, yeah, okay.
Delaine, sorry.
Delaine, and we need the...
Maria.
Are you interested in that? Yeah?
No, Maria, you're, you said you're interested, great, okay.
So, we got...
The research of it.
What's that?
The research part of it.
Yes, the actual grant writing research process. Some, he'll, supervisor employee will have to sign off on it, and that would be you to do that. And Delaine, um, as an individual citizen, and of course, mine is the chairperson.
Now, I might clear up something. The employee actually sets up the account on grants.gov and SAMs. He, whoever it is, has to sign off as a review to grant, any grant that we send in. It cannot be anybody, any of the grant writers or anything else. That employee has, has, sets up an account, then the grant writers can set up a sub-account and a workspace to actually work on the grants in there. But the main thing is that employee reviews and signs off any grant that we send in.
What about you, Ryan?
What? You're the other guy.
Deer and headlights there.
I just like to run the sewer plant.
Usually, it's, it's gonna be your, one of your folks who can do a lot of this.
That would be good, because then they would, they have access already to that information. They're vetted for it.
So, what is the plan? Because, as you stated, there is a lot of information that is not supposed to be out there. So, I mean, when you're utilizing volunteers, how are you gonna prevent that?
Well, the volunteers would only go to, so much to research, see what grants are available. But when it comes to the actual writing and the application submission, I think that goes back to...
Well, most, most of the research is actually, you can just pull off the internet. Most of the stuff that we need, you just pull off the internet.
I don't know much about it. Mike would be the one to address it. He attended the class, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna back out of this and let Mike address it.
The biggest concern is that there's a, a city employee to get up there. They're the ones that have to manage the numbers and hit submit. That's the biggest thing. The grant committee does most of the work. Ninety-nine percent of the work, that's what the grant...
That's what I have to do on my side.
Well, you gotta have somebody that's got some interknowledge.
And if it is clerical, we're not eligible.
Yes, it is clerical. You do need...
Well, you can add it as a, as a job. That's what we'd be, we'd be adding as part of your...
That's all it is. The information is just a bunch, and she just merely enters it. And I like the fact that it's kept there in City Hall.
Yeah.
But we, we'd add it to her comp.
All right.
Motion, we need to make a motion to reform this committee and...
Couldn't the city treasurer, when you hire one, be that person?
That can always be transferred, the power is transferred to that individual. You're absolutely right, and I would think that is the best, uh, route to approach once a posity, city is in a financial position to appoint a treasurer. There are a lot of things that could be turned over to a treasurer. You're absolutely right on that.
Okay. I make a motion that we make, we form a grant writing committee. I will be the chair, Michael Brown will chair the committee. On the committee, we will have Robert, Delaney, Maria.
Gwen.
And Gwen will act as the city employee to submit the data.
Can we say no?
Oh, yes.
You don't know. But, you know, a volunteer can always come forward without.
She'd like to come.
Presentation to the board, as long as the council board accepts that individual's help. I think that doesn't have to come before the board each time, the council, as to who wants to volunteer their help.
Did you utilize one of the library employees, did?
You can utilize whoever wants to step forward that can contribute something in that respect.
Amy.
Okay, Mike, you made a motion, and your motion is.
Have you got it?
My motion is.
Did you put Nate in there? No.
No. He doesn't, he doesn't wanna do it. We've got Gwen, we've got Gwen as the city employee.
He said yes.
My motion is that we form a grant writing committee.
I second that. It's one step at a time, that we form a grant writing committee.
You want me to keep going?
That, we've established that motion, that we're forming a committee. Now, let's go to the next phase of it. Our next motion.
I will, I'm, the motion I.
Hold it.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Yeah.
Mark Thomas.
Yes.
Jay Childs.
Yes.
Michael Brown.
Yes.
Alan Timmons.
Yes.
All Watsons. Marley Leibert. Six zero.
To establish. Committee.
Grant writing with Michael Brown.
Right, okay, now.
What? I, I make a motion that the members of the committee consist of Robert, Delaney, and Maria. Oh, sorry. Please state, those that are beyond the committee, please state your names, full names, and your address.
Maria Denberg.
Just spell the last name, please. You're gonna bear her.
And Delaney Estes. E.S.T.E.S.
Yes, ma'am.
And that we, and that we add the job description, the collector's job description. The water sewer collector, the task of also being the employee involved in grant writing.
For the submission.
For the submission grant writing.
I'll second.
Give it to Ben.
Mark Thomas.
Yes.
Jay Childs.
Yes.
Michael Brown.
Yes.
Alan Timmons. All Watsons. And Marley Leibert. Six zero.
Okay, next on the agenda is Marshall's salary ordinance.
In order for the Marshall's salary, as we talked about last time, to become permanent, it does have to go up the ordinance. Here's a sample ordinance, I'm just suggesting that this be on display until the next regular meeting, and then we get on to the back.
Okay. There, when you deal with ordinances, there has to be two readings. You really need to have advising council to make sure that the ordinance is in compliance with law, and there are specific criteria to be met to enact an ordinance. I understand what you're saying, Mike, but I think we need legal advice.
We have, we have time, because it doesn't happen, because the next election is in, Marshall wins the next election.
Two years, two years.
Two years. We have two years to finish this. This is a draft, this is nothing more than for consideration, if we need to get all that, then that's.
Okay, I, I accept your motion for consideration, also with the fact that it does need to be in compliance with law in the proper fashion of the readings, at least two times.
Yes.
The approval and submission from legal counsel as to being a proper ordinance and what ordinance number, et cetera.
Exactly. That just needs to be given to justice. But this is nothing more than a draft, so that we just need to continue to work, or begin to work on passing the ordinance. That's all that's been seen.
Okay. No, I understand, but I wanted to make that perfectly clear.
Okay, we need to collaborate the flow meter. Collaborate. Gallium. Oh, sorry, let's back up. And I'll. Collaborate. Sorry. Laugh. Okay, back to MML Committee. Mike?
Jesse, in thirty seconds, could you tell us about the MML Committee?
MML Committee is assisted by one person going to St. James once a month, interacting with St. James MML, bringing back vital information once again to the city of Dixon, and it falls in within grant writing or anything else that MML has to do during that time. It also, MML gives us support, pretty much on anything and everything we ask about. So, it's, I think it's a good thing that somebody from the city of Dixon attends that meeting once a month.
I'd like to make.
I'll do that. And for clarification, MML is Missouri Municipal League, for those that don't understand. You can have, you can make a motion for one individual to go once a month, but I think it should be open for any council members to attend.
Our mayor.
The meetings.
They'll allow you to.
Yeah, well, yours is still council member too.
Yeah, right. So, I would like to make a motion to begin with, that Mike Brown. Is on this committee. Poor Mike.
It has to do with grants.
Is it always, is it always, it's not always gonna be that grand?
It's not all, it's not all.
Whatever the government during that time, it's open.
I, I'll second that, with the understanding that any Dixon City Council Board members also be permitted to attend a meeting and to be advised by the city clerk when those meetings are held each month. Be a, be known notice. Will you pay with that? Because I know I would like to, I don't know that I can make it every month, but I definitely would like to go and attend.
Is that a set meeting, or is it just four-week meetings?
I think it's a set, I think, I don't know, it's generally have the time it's, but I think it's a Thursday, Thursday or something like that, they start like six o'clock evening, and you probably know more about that, William, when you're done.
Good food. But it was Merrimack Regional Planting, is it the same thing now? No, they're two different entities.
No, no, this is Missouri Municipal League.
I just went to have a regional planting instead of whatever.
Do we have a second?
MML does other things besides grants, so you get a lot of legislative updates.
It's an association of Missouri municipalities, their own league. Yeah, we got a second on that?
I second it.
Okay.
Okay.
It's all right.
Okay, we'll move on to calibrate. All right, roll call, please.
Mark Thomas.
Yes.
Jay Childs.
Yes.
Michael Brown.
Yes.
Alan Timmons.
Yes.
All Watsons. Marley Leibert.
Yes.
Six zero, and Michael Brown will attend to the MML meetings, as Susan found out we are.
And to provide the other, the remaining board members with email information of the meetings each month in advance, so that they may attend.
Okay, we'll move on to calibrate the flow meter. Who would like to speak on this?
Yeah.
Ernie and Nate?
The flow meter at the treatment plant calculates that flow going out to the creek has to be calibrated every year, according to the N R standards. I have copies of a bid from Envireline, it's about six hundred dollars, but it has to happen every year.
Right, to stay in compliance with D N R.
Right, in compliance. If we were inspected tomorrow, we would get violation.
I make a motion that we approve the calibration in compliance with D N R's mandatory that we calibrate each year.
I second that motion.
Roll call.
Mark Thomas.
Yes.
Jay Childs.
Yes.
Michael Brown.
Yes.
Alan, Alan Timmons.
Yes.
All Watsons.
Yes.
Marley Leibert.
Yes.
Six zero, calibrate the flow meter, and for each year.
There should be a check issued right away and scheduled ASAP, and then check with Jesse for a check to expedite payment.
All right, next is the budget discussion.
All right, so I have some information here. We've been doing some work on the budget, trying to figure out where everything's at. I'll start with the good news. The good news is, is that we have the accounting modules that we need to go from paper to electronic. And I guess you could ask, so, all the good news, we've had them since 2004. The bad news is, is that we have not used these accounting modules, we've only been doing a paper base. Now, please understand that we're talking about hundreds of thousands of documents. We have to go electronic in order to do several things. Reconcile the budget. We have to, we have to be electronic so we can do budget analysis, so that we can see our forecasting and our predictions and see where we're going. So, that's in the process. Now, because we didn't just purchase this module, we discovered that we have it, we need to get somebody trained to do it. Now, we, the options are, it costs us to bring someone, we sum it down, ninety dollars an hour, or we can rely on our mutual aid, who is twenty dollars an hour, and probably actually won't charge us, and they said that we could probably come down there to seventeen to get trained on this system. So, out of, I think, almost necessity, and it's kind of an emergency and we need this, I see that where mutual aid can come in to help and benefit us.
And those are critical tools when dealing with the budget, for the council to know at all times where do you stand at every meeting where our budget falls within each department. I make a motion that we approve our water sewer clerk to attend the meeting on the seventeenth, and to learn the budget financial mechanisms that are in place already with our system that have not been utilized.
I would also like to add Mike Brown to that.
We just voted.
No, we have to add him too. I'd like to amend that, but.
Mr. Brown to attend the water sewer clerk.
Yes.
To attend, to, to, to observe and, okay, that, I, I'll amend my motion then to include Alderman person, Mike Brown, to attend the meeting on the seventeenth with the water sewer clerk to observe the operation and learning process, to make sure that that program is effectively being utilized.
I have a question before everything happens.
Go ahead. Yeah, we have, we have a motion on tape.
Go, go ahead, I think Marlene. I'll withdraw my motion, because Marlene has an opportunity to speak. Go ahead, Marlene.
I just wanna know, as far as getting help with this mutual aid thing, what is, there's a zero cost or what? So, it's clarified.
It depends on what, what the situation is.
So, we don't know until we get into it.
Well, they can give us a projected cost in man-hour time, if we're dealing with a massive sewer issue that needs repaired right away, and we don't have the equipment or manpower, we can confer with them to say, can you look at this? Can you give us an estimate of what it will cost, what the city will charge us for this, if anything? So, each project has to be independently viewed.
Well, I'm talking about this training, somebody going to their.
Right, twenty dollars an hour is their fee.
And they may not even.
As opposed to Summit sending a ref down for ninety dollars an hour.
Is this where you're, you're talking about?
So, we get five hours of benefit through a mutual aid, a city that is using the program to the full extent, as opposed to one hour with Summit. And I think, from a financial standpoint, that's the best way, because we have individuals in the city of Waynesville that are using that program, and I think hands-on.
Well, my understanding was that Summit was gonna fit over all of this.
That has already been addressed, and, and, there was no breach of, of, of the performance in that contract regarding city of Waynesville assisting, so that's a moot issue at this point.
If I may, real quick, before you go to motion, a lot of this data entry does have to do with bills, and not necessarily the collection side. And so, just to warn you, it is hundreds of thousands of documents, a bill, so if you throw it to the collector, it will probably take longer than if you throw it to the, so I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there.
Right.
It's up to you what y'all wanna do, to understand that we're talking years of bills things like AT&amp;T.
Right.
Or.
So, would you like for both to go, or so they can both learn, or?
If they both learn, the job would happen quicker.
That's true, and you've got a backup in the event that one is not present at work that day, it's, it's a cross-training effort, I guess you could say.
So, it won't hurt for the information that you need to do, would, to do her job, right?
Right.
It would be a good learning process.
Yeah, and it is, it is adding type stuff, so.
And that's what she's doing.
So, we, we make a motion that Mike attend, that Jesse Fleming, the city collector, city clerk attend, that.
Collector and city clerk.
Okay, not that Jesse attend, okay, so we want the.
Yeah.
We want the water sewer clerk to attend. Alderman Mike Brown. Assistant filer to the city clerk.
And any other aldermen that would like.
Yes, you'd like to go, Paul?
And by everyone attending, the rate is still twenty dollars an hour, correct?
I believe it's gonna be Thursday at nine o'clock, on the seventeenth.
Okay.
Marilyn, second take, if you'd like to join. To learn this process, if you'd like to go learn this process, Waynesville.
Okay, I make a motion. That Alderman John Brown, I had it going with Drew. That Alderman Mike Brown attend, as well as the sewer water clerk, Gwen attend, along with the assistant filer Lou attend the May seventeenth. Training for, for accounting, that's correct, for accounting, with the city of Waynesville through the mutual aid agreement, at the rate of twenty dollars an hour, as opposed to ninety dollars an hour provided by Summit. And that any other alderman or alderperson be permitted to attend the same on the seventeenth.
Now, is this for the whole group or for each?
No, it's for the whole group to attend, the three that I named, and any other alderperson that would like to attend.
I'm not going to go, I don't believe, at this time, I won't be going. You can go, anyone can go. That's fine, okay, I'll second the motion. Roll call, please.
Mark Thomas.
Yes.
Jay Childs.
Yes.
Michael Brown.
Yes.
Alan Timmons.
Yes.
All Watsons. Marley Leibert.
Yes.
That's six zero, six zero, Mike Brown.
Only, we can not go, four of us, all of you cannot attend this together.
Well, that's true, you'd have a corner.
Oh, it's a workshop, okay. Okay, we'll get into another. We've got lots of.
So, I want everyone to, I wanna. We need to understand that payroll is about sixty-five thousand dollars. We need to understand that payroll is about sixty-five thousand dollars. Now, we have cash flows, and so as long as we make that, we make payroll. Okay? So I just want to point out, I'm going to read some numbers off here. I know we all love numbers, I love numbers. This is going back to the January of twenty seventeen. This is what we took in. Okay? Now think, we have to have sixty-five just to make payroll. January of twenty seventeen, seventy thousand, I'm rounding. February, sixty-three thousand. March was one thousand, or one hundred and seventeen thousand. April, fifty-two thousand. May, seventy-five thousand. June, sixty-seven thousand. July, fifty-four thousand. August, sixty-five thousand. September, forty-eight thousand. October, twenty-nine thousand. November, fifty-five thousand. December, sixty-five thousand. That was last year. This year, beginning with January, we brought in ninety-one thousand. February, thirty-four thousand. March, sixty-one thousand. April, sixty-two thousand.
Does the January include the taxes?
This includes water. Now, some of these are blank. Water meter deposit, not, I'll read what's, where this is, what it's capturing. Water meter deposit, police board licenses, and the missing charges. We're still looking into it. Now, if you remember, if you all remember correctly, we asked for, we had a bunch of bills and we asked for all the invoices to be resubmitted to us so that we could verify the amounts and make sure that they're right and everything. This amount does not include what we did, okay, what we asked to be resubmitted. These are all the bills that the city currently has not approved. And the amount is, and that amount was, it was what, forty or fifty thousand dollars to wait for it to come back to us, for sure. And this amount is one hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and sixty cents. Now, some of these bills go back a little ways and they're pretty important. We have bills, I'm just going to pick and choose just a couple that are super important, like Basset Insurance, twenty-eight thousand dollars to renew and do seven-one twenty-eighteen. Windstream, that's the phones, that's our landline phones. And the Internet, Jesse, is landline phones. This landline phone, one thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars.
Two thousand seventeen, continued education not paid.
Yes, that would also. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. I got to continue.
Why?
Two thousand seventeen, continued education's not paid in the state.
I believe, is that the Missouri Sheriff's Association training?
Yes, sir.
Seven hundred and fifty here.
They canceled our agreement.
Here's another one on here for a hundred dollars. Here's, there's a couple on here that aren't paid. Let's see.
Where are the cell phones?
Cell phones, AT&amp;T, we owe one thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars.
Okay.
That's how they all get turned in.
We need to have all of the cell phones turned in. We've decided that we're going to cancel the contract for this time. We have to vote on it. If y'all are in voting on this. Mine has not been working. I'm going to keep it plugged in the whole time.
Utility bill, we owe thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-two cents.
Is the audit still, do they talk about the audit? I'm not hearing anything about the audit.
It is, as soon as we can afford to hire an auditor, I would request that we do so.
Yeah, there's not any funds available to request an independent audit. We don't have the funds to pay it, do you?
Please understand, if we request it from the state, they charge us as well.
Yeah, I still have not heard anything about the three hundred thousand dollars here, the three hundred thousand dollars.
We're still waiting for bank statements.
You're still looking for bank statements.
We're still waiting.
They requested reams of paper from us, reams, reams of paper from us and we dropped those off. So they're being printed down.
Are these figures current or reoccurring?
Oh, well, some of them happen often because you say Gaskasage, right? Gaskasage is for utilities. We have lights on all the time.
Now, that's.
I mean, these figures that you were giving, is that?
This is from one of the one months.
That's one month figures?
No.
Okay.
This is what, this is what we owe. This isn't broken down by month.
Okay.
This is just what we owe from the past. Not yet. My suggestion is that prioritize. Jesse? I think, okay, I'm going to go with something built on. My, no. My suggestion is that we. I like to take this a little bit at a time, show a good fake. Pick and choose the important ones. For example, insurance. What happens if you don't pay insurance? If they can't, then get suspended. That's twenty thousand. Please also know that we have another bond payment coming up. We have two more bond payments coming up. One in, correct me if I'm not wrong, Jesse, in September and November.
How long does this bond go through till twenty? Twenty-eight, thirty-two, somewhere in there?
Twenty-year bond.
It's twenty years, I think.
Twenty-twenty-eight?
And if I remember correctly, it was.
Great bond would be twenty-eight, twenty-three, twenty-thirty-three.
There's two of them.
So, so we have two actual bond payments on each and two actual interest payments on each. And the monies have all been used. There's no reserve?
The road we called on, we called on the road and that was completely gone. And the water, the jam, so.
They've been exhausted.
So we'll know, we'll know more once we get everything into the accounting system. We can pull all this because as, there's, going through receipts can take a pretty long time.
I can't, but you and I.
I know.
Need to start on that.
But if we get it into the accounting system, then we can start using, we can leverage the Summit to our benefit. Which we've already paid for. We've already paid for the law, the Summit.
Yes, we utilize the system. It's going to be very lengthy and time-consuming initially to put all that in. But once it's done, and it's done on a monthly basis, we need to do reconciliations every month. And if need be, instead of having fifteen accounts, we need to consolidate accounts and set them out in separate line item funds.
So it's been one large GL for a long time.
That's why we need to set out specific line item funds. So we know is what's going into each fund spreadsheet. That if we come here to a city council meeting and somebody from the water and sewer department comes in and say, hey, we have this potential problem. Jesse, what's our balance on water, or sewer? You can come up instantly and tell us what our balance is. I mean, this, this coming in here, you know, we don't have the money, how much do we have? You know, what's our reconciliation? What is that showing? How much we have?
The fact that we've been operating out of a general ledger is going to double, triple the line is going to kick us out. Call it one giant.
Mess.
Mess. I know there's shown like its line items. Look, it's not divided that way.
It's not. That's why each, we need to have a fund, a fund, a separate fund for each.
And this is why we'll have to have a lot of the data entry done. I think we're going to use a bunch of.
That's true. That's true.
You said Lou's good.
And as far as I can tell, when I double second the figures, it looks right to me. Now, I haven't gone behind every single digit because I don't have a mind to do that, but it appears to be.
And you've expressed and stressed to her the importance and accuracy. And that should be easy because if she's putting it on, we can get a total, we can compare that with the bank statement of total deposits. And then should be able to balance. If there's a discrepancy, then we can either look on ours or the banks. And banks make these things do. When I was treasurer, there was constantly a credit memo for transposed digits, but at least that gives us a starting point. But again, this is going to take months to input.
And this will probably, this may take a year or longer to dig out. I hate to say it, but we, and we've got to start though.
We've got, it's never been done. Right, right. I agree.
There's, now, I, well, we need to make, we need to see if we approve this and start working on it. I also have.
Mark, break. That's your question.
Can we have like a department head meeting and talk about some of these bills? Because some are going to be higher priority than others. I mean, like, for instance, we're behind in mules payments. We're fixing to lose our mule system.
And that's what we need to do.
State of Missouri's not going to wait on their money.
That is true.
We have to.
I mean, there's different priorities that's got to be paid.
Well, that's true. Just like your continuing education, mules is very important. When you pull some over, you've got to have access to that. If they pull that, you're operating in the dark.
A voting member of the Police Chiefs Association that hasn't been paid. So they frown on that? I mean, there's different, there's different things here that's got to be prioritized.
That's administrative and we're more than glad to meet with you and for you to tell us what's going on with that and see what we can do to issue payment. Okay, where we're at.
So, also, to help solve some of these problems, I think that we need to have two budget officers. Any amounts over two fifty that's budget officers can approve. Anything larger than that, if it's an emergency, with the mayor's permission, the mayor signing in on it. And other than that, anything above two fifty would have to come to the council for approval for purchase. We need to shift from, we're paying for everything that was already just purchased. The department heads just went out, bought stuff. Shift to that things have to be approved up prior to, so that we can get a handle on this and so we don't end up where we're not making payroll. Because we're making payroll now, but we've got some major things coming up. Insurance, electricity, landlines.
Right, and we've got to be very tight with every department's budget, very, very tight with that. And not letting them basically have free rein to go out and spend it and do.
It's going to have to be a very centralized budget.
We're going to have to micromanage it. That's absolutely true. That's absolutely true. And your suggestion?
I suggest that you, Armin, I be the budget officer.
I would agree to that.
Yeah, to further move, yes, can we back up to AT&amp;T on somebody make a motion? If you do that, make a motion, somebody second to.
Well, yeah. Do you all want to go through this? How do you all want to, I guess, let's make budget officers and then let's see how we want to go through this.
Is there a termination penalty? Because sometimes that's larger than paid in bills.
It's coming due, but to turn these.
It's already passed due and we owe seventeen thousand, or seventeen hundred.
Let's just backtrack to the cell phones.
Okay, so AT&amp;T, the cell phones, some of them don't even work. I think we just go ahead, pull them all in, cancel the contract, and we help renew.
Have we looked at the contract to see what it does in fact in spite? Do you think, do you have a contract?
I'm sorry, it's due, well, it was due four seconds.
That's what the sale was due, but I'm talking about the close facts, with the expiration, determine the contract.
I have one that doesn't work.
What about the tablets? Does that mean you need tablets too?
For tonight.
So what's the replacement? Then they got all the tablets too.
We will look at a replacement when we find some other money in the budget.
That's prioritizing.
So, who all has one? You have one. I have one. You have one.
Even mine, mine's subpoenaed by the way today, so if I use my cellphone, I'm probably going to save you a bill.
I have to. I suggest a BY, I suggest a BYD. Uh, plan to replace it.
What?
Oh, we can't afford to tie bills.
That's why.
I shouldn't be able to leave. Sunshine. Yeah, I could fall under that. Everyone, they're like, they're all sunshine.
You get sued.
Well, you request.
I have both of my phones, you know, my own, my personal cellphone number and my salon cellphone number.
It's sunshineable.
I know it is.
Well, if they sunshine, doesn't mean they get your extra personal data. They get counsel.
I think that would take a court order for you to use your personal phone. Just speculation.
But it happens.
It has happened.
Two years ago, I turned mine in.
It has happened.
Under court order.
Well, that was a civil matter and that was separate from.
Well, we're not exempt from civil matters, man.
That's true. But I'm just saying, it would take a court order, from my understanding, to ascertain.
I would have no problem giving up the city phone as long as I would have somebody call City Hall and say, hey, I need Marlene to come by my house and look at something.
That's my point. I'm an elected official. Everything I do is sunshineable or subpoenaed.
The bills aren't going to get paid on these phones. There's no way.
So, we're going to cancel. We've got their permission. Make a motion.
Do I give you a bunch of two paper on City Hall?
There you go.
The board has to approve to take away tablets and cell phones from us.
That's true.
So, yeah, I think it does have to be in the form of a motion.
So, I would like to make a motion that, or do we?
Just go ahead and knock his out. Just knock him out.
Okay, I've asked three times now to see if we can have phones or questions directed to City Hall. If they have questions regarding any of our ward questions. Yeah, I've gotten, really gotten, not gotten a straight answer.
No. Was it, was exactly?
For them to take message.
If Anthony, if Anthony had a question for Betty regarding her ward.
Regarding Anthony's ward. He's got most of his cell phone. That's what I'm talking about. I'm saying, could he, why can't he call Jesse and say, hey Jesse, can you have Betty contact me or can we meet at City Hall?
They don't have to. They've got my personal number. Five, seven, three, eight, five, five, one, nine, four, seven.
That's fine, but it's sunshineable and I'm not going to have my phone sunshine.
I have nothing to hide.
Well, I don't either, but.
Salon number is seven, five, nine, two, seven, four, zero.
Someone called, when I was up there the other day, someone called and asked for Betty's email address or phone number. They would not give it to them. They gave them Jesse's email address.
Who, at where, at City Hall?
Up at the city clerk when I went up to pay my bill.
Okay, well then we'll change that. Because my number's out there.
Yeah, they wouldn't, they wouldn't give it to. Huh?
Thank you for letting me know.
Yeah, they would, they gave Jesse the email address.
Okay, well, let me ask you this. I've made my phone number available to the public. And Jesse, if anybody calls City Hall that has a question directed to me or in my ward.
They want to hear the email address or phone number.
You give them my telephone number.
You already put it out there.
I did. I'm just saying that.
It's in the paper.
Is your, is, are you okay with, with being contacted directly on your phone? Marlene, are you okay with being contacted directly on your phone?
My personal phone?
Right. You're not. Okay. Paul, you're not either. Marilyn? Okay. Well, I'll put it out there. I don't have a problem with anybody calling me directly on my phone. And if I get a sunshine request or a court order for, to look at my phone, have at it.
Okay, now, I want to explain that and Jesse can confirm this. If you're using your phone, two years ago, we got sunshine requests for phone records. It cost the city over two thousand dollars to produce those records. That was for one phone.
That was for phones that were issued to the city.
Correct. The same's going to apply to you. If you get requested and you have to dig in your records to provide an answer to that sunshine, it's going to cost you as well.
That's all right. I'll go right online, print my calendar and everything. I'll produce the records.
You might have two dozen. I know. You might have two dozen, I know. If you utilize it for business of any kind.
If you're a public entity.
And we do, you're elected.
I understand that, no, I understand that, but I didn't, I didn't say you have to pay the cost.
It's just like all my emails, I have to save those, they're on my phone.
He wouldn't bear the cost, we as individuals wouldn't have to bear the cost. Because we are representative of the city.
I'm just saying, think about how many sunshine requests come through Jesse. This, this is going to happen, it's not a matter of if. People's going to challenge this right here.
What'd they do before cell phones, just do that?
There wasn't sunshine until nineteen ninety-eight.
Walk you down when you got to drive by.
Walk you down.
Certified mail? So I don't, I don't know.
Are direct communication being through email, is everybody okay with that?
Still goes, still goes through phone?
That's sunshineable too.
It is, but you've got the records right there.
You could set up, could you set up, um, different email or keep it separate from your personal?
We can do that at city hall.
I do, I have my email, Mike Brown, the story of E D A, Al look up all that.
You don't have an email address, do you, Betty?
No, but my husband does. I don't like to get on that, you know, I don't, so, you know, we could, we could, uh.
Why don't you set up a city?
We could do something about, um.
Email per, but.
She just, she just suggested once you set up a, a city email address, is that something Jesse can do? Every question from anybody in town can go straight to Jesse and then he can get it to whoever.
We don't want everybody going straight to Jesse anymore because everyone going straight to Jesse is creating a big problem with our office work.
It's an email.
Jesse has not time to do anything extra right now, he's, he is busy and all.
Jesse's got a city email, why don't you set up a city email for each council person?
We can, we can, probably do that, we can go into the.
Well, if we could set up an account for each on the person and Jesse gets those emails. All he has to do is forward it to the respective party.
Why isn't it automatically?
You could set it automatically. You could open it yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a lot, that's a lot.
Well, we have a, we have a website, we just have the website to get you to give them emails.
We do, yeah.
Setting up emails is not going to eliminate phone calls, people are still going to call you for business. Aldermen are still going to call Aldermen for business. That's still going to open you up for sunshine and subpoena. I understand that. Jesse, can you check on the tablets? Because I recall we, that we bought those as an add-on for a dollar and if we complete our contract, I think there are. So we're eliminating it all to get the data?
We looked at the contract to see if we paid his mail, we paid down instead of anything else.
He explained, it's still going to update. They have their own phone number site.
But when the contract expires, do we have the option to buy out the phones?
We can look it up.
Or reduce price, what?
So if the contract's almost completed like in the next month or two. Why wouldn't we turn the phones back in and just get them?
How many phones there are?
I counted four.
There's more than that, there's got to be more than four.
For seventeen hundred dollars.
No, there's like fifteen, isn't it?
There's a lot, the police department, all the police departments.
No, we don't. Well, you guys are canceling service, are you canceling for the police department, everybody's phone?
Before me.
Yeah, before you, yeah, yeah, before you, yes.
We have two phones.
They all have tablets.
I should tell you on the phone bill, I'm like, well, it'd be cheaper just to get a month, uh, go buy a.
Straight talk. Let the contract run out, just do straight talk every month, get them renewed before it's over, it was thirty-five. Buy a ten dollar flip phone.
You could do AT&T for twenty-five dollars a month with no data.
Can't pay the bill, can't pay it.
That's what I'm trying to say, thank you, Brian.
Sorry, plain and simple.
We have to make decisions on some of these today or soon. Because what, we're going to, we're going to make payroll today. And we have to pay some, I mean, for the rest of the week, anything we make can go towards, well, debt and a few needs, like that six hundred dollar. So what are we starting to make? We have things that are coming due, like your shirts, we'll have a gap in insurance. Electricity, we're already several months, how far are we behind electricity at two? Two months behind electricity, how long till they cut us off? How can we consider petroleum? Petroleum, we owe fifteen hundred dollars in petroleum, that's our city to be able to drive around. We have two again, okay. Phelps, Midwest, Midwest fifteen hundred. They're getting, chief, how important is mules? Explain it, just please.
We, it's a god to.
Over, he runs mules for kids in the background, only individual, who he's dealing with.
They're safe.
Who, who do we pay mules to?
State of Missouri.
Missouri State Highway Patrol?
Yes.
Okay, one hundred thirty-five.
There, there's more than that there.
So, we were taking these phones in, that you got it from? We can try and take these phones in? And you just got it? I'm just curious.
There's a bunch of, now the stuff for the resorts and the conferences, stuff like that. So, you want to go ahead and nominate, go ahead and nominate those officers.
What's, what's being spent on country mark miscellaneous?
That's two great things, correct.
That should be some of, all right, that's an accumulation, we don't buy twelve hundred dollars at a time.
They're hungry.
That could be anything, I mean, the other departments buy a country mark as well.
For?
What are we buying?
I couldn't take.
Jesse, it's got your name, what are we buying?
We get a lot of supplies there as far as the treatment plant, all our distilled water, all our paper towels, our bleach, could be fuel.
Country mark, why don't we use the dollar store, which is cheaper?
I'm buying both.
I've always been instructed to go there, I didn't, I don't know no different.
So we can make some changes, hey?
Okay, I, we, yeah, we can, we can look at that.
Maybe if we're, if we're willing to give that business, all of our business that we, from them and.
Can you talk about paper towels and stuff like that?
Well, we're up there, we're paying taxes.
Going to Sam's and buying them both.
Yeah, I just want to say two things. Uh, might not have been able to do it, might not have been able to find anybody, but I was very disappointed that you didn't have a preacher or somebody to say prayer before me. Okay? Uh, Third and Oak Street, my mom's got an ongoing problem, Jerry Baker. Said it's on your desk to sign.
I don't have a desk.
They said it was in your hands to sign.
It's up to the mayor and office.
To get him to, he's supposed to buy a load of gravel.
I'll see if I can find it, for Jerry Baker's wife.
He's supposed to get a load of gravel to put, he's, he's parking his trucks on Oak Street.
In the ditch.
On the corner of Oak, you know about this?
In the ditch, yeah.
In the ditch, now he's creating trucks, putting gravel.
So across from the church?
Across from the, uh, cat corner.
Yeah, for the church?
Yeah.
Just get another one.
He's parking, yeah.
He was parking a dump truck, which could make the ruts, then I guess.
He's not now, um, but he's been instructed to fix the ruts because they're on city property.
Jesse knows about it, because you had to write the letter or whatever, but it's supposedly waiting for a signature from the mayor. Don't kill the messenger, I'm just here.
No, 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 I wouldn't dare. We made you. So he's waiting for, uh, for waiting for a load of gravel.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You can say the prayers and ask for you.
No, I'm not, I'm. I know a few guys know that, but.
I know. Yes.
Circuit Court bond judge warned three hundred dollars. Camden County Circuit Court on the bond for three hundred dollars.
That's for inmates, like if, uh, like if we have an inmate from, that we pick up and they've got a bond, a warrant out of Camden County, they post their bond here. Jesse's got to send a check to that court to pay that bond.
Yeah, and that's not being paid.
I, you're looking at homes or.
That's priority, that three hundred dollars needs to be sent, that was money that was collected in good faith to.
Correct.
To give to Camden City, that has got to be paid. That three hundred dollars, Betty. That three hundred dollars has to be paid, that's bond money that's posted and that has to be forwarded to Camden County. That is their money. If he was picked up and bond was set at three hundred dollars, Camden County sent that bond. Dixon collected that bond on their behalf.
There's probably several in there like that.
So, do, is the judge going to, does he just come to the city on that one?
Has nothing to do with the judge.
Nothing. Betty, okay.
It goes to Jesse and Jesse's got to cut a check to that county.
Okay, so we have to cut a check on that.
Right, because we picked him up on the bond in Camden, Camden County, there was a warrant. And Camden County says there's a three hundred dollar bond. So they post a bond here at Dixon and then the three hundred dollars goes to Camden County because they're the one that set the bond.
Right.
So that money has been paid, there's no sense, that should have been laterally paid out right away.
That could be a lawsuit, because if he gets picked up or arrested because they have not got his bond. That would be very bad.
Okay, so we'll have to pay that check. Another one.
God, I'm just putting asterisks by what I feel.
There's going to be several of those bonds.
There's another one for two hundred.
There should, it shouldn't cost, no. But the cash should, especially.
Forty cents should, what would that maybe? Couldn't you electronically fund everything up?
I'll be serious, some with the cell phones.
Very valid, it shouldn't cost the city any money.
It doesn't.
Probably, they've already spent a lot.
We don't have a lot of time. So the big ones, well, that's what we've been talking about, insurance is what I mentioned.
What is Missouri Department of Public Safety account, account on?
That might be mules.
Is that a Conspantion Fund, C O N P A N S A I O N? I don't even know what that word is.
Is it an acronym or something?
Or a misspelling? What is that, Jesse? Fifty dollars to Missouri Department of Public Safety, it says Conspantion Fund Judge Ward upon receipt.
It's probably some training. There's certain training we're being charged, twenty-five dollars a class four and fifty dollars a class four, because our dues wasn't big. What's that? I'm not sure. I think it's a week.
And her lodging was two hundred dollars? For a week? Are she paying, is, are we paying her gas money when she come back and forth?
How you do that on the league?
Also, these are the cash receipts that are used currently, okay? We are about to run out of these books. Now, if we're to buy a box of these books.
That's cheap.
Betty, we have. It's very cheap, I mean, where is it at?
It's at Lodge of the Four Seasons, it's a resort and that's where the conferences are.
It's a, it'll be a discounted.
For a week for two hundred dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's a.
They do a group rate.
Roof rates, all right, okay, sorry, I was just, I tried to believe it would be.
For ten?
Now.
What's so special about those receipts?
Now, we're running out of these books.
They have control numbers.
We can go to a module assigned, but the machine is a thousand dollars and the module is two. So.
You can't pay your bills, right?
We need to let them know, do you want to buy more of these books? Do you buy these books until we can afford a machine? Because the machine pays for itself after a time, understand that.
What, the city Dixon on these somewhere?
Or, or we need to look at a different offer. I, I'm just presenting, I'm just letting everyone know, we're probably going to need to continue to go with these books.
We can't buy anywhere, you just can't buy.
No, and, where do you buy them from? And where do we get this from, Jesse?
I think those are, we get from, uh, A B C L Center.
You could get that a lot, you could get a stamp, City of Dixon.
So it's up to you all, I'm just letting you all know that we have a resource running out. There is something that can take place, however, I don't think we can afford it right now.
Why would you buy a machine on your book?
That's what I'm talking about, because what happens is the machine, the, the long, if you look at the long-term costs, the machine pays for itself. However, we are not in a position to invest in that right now. That's what I'm saying, so we need to keep in mind that when we can, a way to cut costs is either buying books that are a lot cheaper.
We can go with a generic book and just get a City of Dixon stamp.
Yeah.
But she is running out of these very quickly, by the end of the month, another solution has to happen.
City workers, they have uniforms?
Yes, it's for your contract. It is.
It's hot, no.
It cannot be eliminated.
He just told me that, I just wondered that.
These are two. It doesn't matter if you go with Cinta, because Aramark owns Cinta. We already know this right here. It's a, yeah, so, wake your hive, get the bid, they're owned by the big company.
We have two motions on the.
Because they can't pay their bills now.
And make two budget officers, and anything more than two hundred and fifty dollars must be approved by the council fire department.
Unless it's an emergency that the mayor has had been for thousands of dollars, which would be up to a thousand dollars.
So just to be, I'll second it.
So I'll call, I'll say.
Two hundred and fifty dollars, former mayor got seven hundred dollars.
That's always true, I thought.
That was the asking question.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's.
So do you.
We have these meetings, these are on the agenda. It doesn't, I think, I don't know, we don't get anywhere, that's why it's table.
Let's go table it, let's hand our cell phones over tomorrow.
Well, why would we hand our cell phones over if the contract doesn't run until, say, the end of June? Why not have a little bit of use in that until?
Let's just, and we're gonna table it.
We need, Jesse, you need to pull the contract, and you need to tell us when that contract ends.
And how many phones are on it? So you know, because somebody else said there was, he said there was fifteen phones.
I don't know.
Well, no, if it does a cancellation fee, but if the contract ends, there is no consolation, cancellation fee.
Right.
You just basically don't renew it, so there's. Right, right, so, but, but a cancellation fee is only if we terminate it tomorrow, instead of a month and a half to go on it.
But, but Jesse said we're close to it being completed.
Yeah, but we don't know when.
I mean, it wouldn't make sense to cancel it if we could own it in a month.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what she's been saying.
What she's saying.
So we'll wait, let's get, what's.
Even, even if we don't renew and get dated, I mean, we've still got the phones.
We do, and it's, and we can, we can go to our own service provider, or shop, or whatever. But I can't see collected phones right now, we still have a month, month and a half left on the plan.
So we'll table it until the next meeting, or until we find out.
Well, let's table it, we need the contract, we need the contract to see when it expires, so that we can make a, a good decision on that.
We do, and we may want to go to their just, just, let's just go over budget. I, I don't know. Since you all.
That's a separate, that's a separate meeting, just in itself, for just budget items, yeah, I mean, this is two.
Well, we need to, yeah, we need to get it this week, like within the next few days. What, Wednesday? I've got plans Thursday.
Okay, well, we're gonna do it this week.
Either we do it, I say we either do it tonight or we do it this week. You, if we got mules about to be counseled.
I wanna make a suggestion on cell phones, AT&T has FirstNet now, which is an emergency system for all first responders and stuff for disasters, where we'll be guaranteed service when everybody else is down. You may take that into consideration for your police department.
We're supposed to have a meeting with Brenda at AT&T for that.
And that's true, and you get some sort of discount for being, um, affiliated with a, uh, public entity or a business or something. Have, do we have that?
But that's, this'll be like a, all emergency services.
We're not on it yet. We're not on it yet. AT&T's just now going to FirstNet, which was a priority.
I spent forty billion dollars.
Since nine eleven came down, um.
Thank you for that information, we need to check into that, because that could drastically reduce the cost of our service.
Well, that's just for emergencies, I was, if you shut your contract off for.
But we, we have emergency situations with the city, water sewer, breakage, there, there may be the exception.
I don't know.
It doesn't pertain to.
See, if you don't know unless you ask, you don't know.
It doesn't, it's law enforcement, fire, and email, totally. All it is is a priority level.
Are you available Wednesday for this? Yes, are you available Wednesday for this? I'm available, are you available Wednesday for this?
Well, if she's not, we can still have enough for.
Okay, Paul said we're available, so let's just send a budget meeting for this Wednesday night at, uh, at six P M. Is that all right? Is that all right with you, Betty? Jesse, you can get notified tomorrow right away about the budget meeting. And open either for Wednesday at six P M.
Now, there's just, there's one item we have to approve.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree, we'll be. That's all right.
Legal estimate of five hundred dollars. Requires request.
A legal estimate?
And it was a legal, a legal, uh, what, what is it, Paul, Jesse, I think Bill, uh, for this.
What type of request?
Sunshine request.
Why, why are we having to pay for sunshine request?
Jesse?
We have to pay for proposed coming down through Attorney General's office.
Can we say who it is? Can we say that and help it?
Yes.
So everybody knows what we're talking about?
The estimate, it was estimated to, it was estimated to be two, five hours of legal work. So. I think we're going to.
Is that the one that I know about? Wanna make that public?
And the personnel issue? The sunshine request?
I don't think it's personnel, it's like the official. Well, I remember, I don't remember reading it, I'm sorry, I just, I just know about the budget, I just know about. I don't remember, I don't remember all the specifics, I don't remember all the specifics, no. Well, if it's only two hours, um, five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars.
It's two twenty-five.
And what's that for, I'm sorry?
Can I make that public?
It's a request for what, I'm sorry?
A sunshine request, it's a sunshine request that came down through the AG's office, nobody needed it.
Well, if it's two fifty an hour, that's what we pay the city attorney.
Pay twenty.
Yes, no? Wanna make it public or not? Yes or no?
Doesn't sound like nobody wants to take the bull by the horns.
You know, why hasn't someone come to us for that?
They probably did.
I doubt it.
They might have, but you didn't get, you personally were not informed, that could, that's, that's a possibility. Because I'm sure it didn't happen then, then, with this. And no, we don't.
Oh, yeah, it, it is with this. It has to be filled by tomorrow. Is it legal? To say?
How much do we owe for this request?
Five hundred.
They asked, it's estimated two, it's estimated.
Yes. I put in a question. This is yours, this is yours.
Of doing what?
It's gonna cost the city five hundred dollars. Started before I took office. And had, had it been answered in a timely manner, it wouldn't have even cost anything, so don't. Well, you don't have to do this, it's just the truth. Truth is the truth. It is the truth. Five hundred dollars. The fact of the matter is, answer the damn question when you get it. Am I right?
Yeah. We got blocked a lot, I don't know if you know, Betty, we got blocked a lot, the mayor blocked a lot of stuff. I got blocked a lot. It's not, has nothing to do with you, that's why I said you might.
A council member before, it has to do with the city fulfilling all of the requests. The city wouldn't be in the position they're in, regardless of it's Marlene or him or her, if they would have fulfilled all their core requests in the first place.
We did it properly, we did our documentation, we submitted it, we asked for it, we should get it, anyway.
One in fingers at this point is not helping us.
Exactly right, thank you.
Figure anything out, it's done, it's over with.
It's not over, we have to get it out by tomorrow.
Regardless of whether you guys like each other or not, the bill has to be.
Well, and you do it. But it's been for me at times before it got to be a general. You have thirty days to get it. It was pretty simple, I mean, I actually gave the information back to Jesse in an email that I can prove. Well, if he sent it to the mayor. Here it is, here it is, I got it just for it. Nobody, nobody has. That's not me, I put that request in before I even, before I even got into office. As a citizen of this town, that is my rights.
Y'all do remember the lawsuit or not, the settlement, because some guy was doing sunshine requests and went out, the city was aware of this issue before, I'm sure, yours came out. There was already a settlement made.
Don't forget he got paid off, it was supposed to be six, he paid seventy-five, half of it's supposed to go to the memorial, that half is supposed to go to the police department.
I followed up with that too, and he never. No, wait, why should you take it if it's not on you?
This, right?
It's not on you.
Wait a minute, I wanna understand this, okay? Marlene says she provided you the email request before the AG got the call, correct? Okay, and what in that request, why did, why didn't you provide it with that information?
And that's exactly what Jesse told me too, and he said, he said, Marlene, he said, um, I have asked them, and they.
Asked them, meaning our city attorney, Brian Stumpy, so he had records that related to the railroad. He had, Stumpy, and you made that request to him? And you made that request to him, and he responded with?
Then he's liable for the cost.
Yes.
Um, quite frankly, the way I look at it, if our clerk honored the, um, sunshine law request by Marlene, and she even provided him with an email and opportunity before it was turned over to the Attorney General to provide that information, he, did he provide you with, with some information? So the only thing that was lacking was what related to the railroad? Okay, and so the, our city attorney was handling all matters, legal matters regarding the railroad, correct? And you advised him of this, did you also advise him of the deadline for this request?
Everything I got from Marlene, you get a copy.
So he failed to correspond with you at all?
Yep.
Dereliction of duty?
Yep.
Um, that's, that's, that doesn't settle well with me.
I can say when the request is, Marilyn, I had requested, uh, information. Kelly.
It's already been made publicly, most of all.
It's your request.
Well, yeah.
I had, I had asked him, uh, I had asked, he provided with how and many hours had been pushed towards work on the Veterans Memorial. Uh, I asked for a breakdown of all of the hourly, however much you charged for whatever it was, I really can't remember everything else, I had like five different things. Um, and then I was told later by him that, uh, in so many words that, uh, because of statute, whatever, whatever, that I couldn't have provided with those hourly rates, even though at the time I was, you know, citizen of the city, um, paying this guy. So, yeah, he was a jerk, sorry. Did you ever try bringing it to your alderman? No.
Betty, who are the last three guys, who had her position last time?
Right.
I don't, as far as, as far as a sunshine law request, I don't have to.
You're the other one, aren't you?
I don't have to go to my alderman. I don't have to go to all of them.
This is about. You can go directly to the city hall. You can go directly to city hall and make a settlement.
Exactly, that's my point, I don't know, I'm just making, bring that up, why'd you even ask that?
They've got seventy-two hours.
Why did I ask that, because she said, what is this, five hundred dollars? Okay, so what is seventeen thousand dollars, what is, uh? That we're going through then, we are going through then. So you made it. You were the one that had to make it public, that's why we're having this conversation. That's exactly right. That's exactly right, you're picking. Not picking. Yeah, you are, just letting the public know. Yeah, I am letting the public know.
But she's not the only alderman submitting sunshine requests.
No, that's true. So why are you jumping on her wheels? I'm not jumping on her.
We've had one the last two days for payroll since two thousand fourteen.
No, don't. Here we go. Yeah, here we go.
I'd like to make a.
But I think, I think what they're saying is that the attorney can pay it, should have to be responsible.
All right, I, I think it's.
Oh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I think we're discussing matters that is not on the agenda, in my personal opinion. What was the last matter that was on the agenda? Was the budget, and we need answers, and I think we all agreed to meet Wednesday evening at six P M to, to address these specific deals that are deemed, uh.
And this will just need to be approved for a while, that's why I brought it, and the rest of it, we have to approach that time, it doesn't, well, you do it tomorrow, if you got time to.
If there's money due and owing, the Attorney General's office, the last thing we want.
Is the.
Is on our back, so I make a motion that we approve that five hundred dollars to go out and be postmarked in tomorrow's mail.
It, it's a motion to pay.
I'll second it, it has to be paid.
It's to pay the five hundred dollars.
It says attorney, estimated attorney time, that's what it is, estimated attorney time, so you can go ahead, and you can give permission that you can go ahead and do that, she's ruled out.
I make a motion that we pay the estimated attorney time.
Real quick question, Mr. Rowland, you listed off several months on the revenue that was brought in, I think it was February of this year, twenty-six or twenty-nine thousand? Why was that number so low?
We don't know, we're researching it now.
So we don't know if it's been, are you keeping like it to this point?
We have a second, right, we need to vote in.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
Let's go in.
Go harder, please. Idea.
Yes.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brown Timmons.
Yes.
O'Wasen.
Yeah.
Marlene Lepper.
Yes.
Anthony Sixt, you have a dollar.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you please rephrase your question?
I believe it was February of eighteen, where you said, I think it, it was February one of the, seventeen or eighteen, where it was twenty-some thousand.
For income?
Yes, revenue, compared to the other months of forty to sixty, my question was, do we know why that number was so low, less than half?
We don't, we are currently researching everything, we're looking into all this to understand why our cash flows are not consistent.
Not significant.
What was January's revenue?
That's, that's huge.
It was a hundred thousand this year last.
January of this year.
Holy cow, that's a lot.
Okay, that's why I'm thinking, real estate kicked in, the collection of real estate taxes.
Well, that was the one that was a hundred thousand.
So then the payout on the real estate would increase our.
But I believe it was February, one of the Februars, where it was twenty, February of twenty eighteen was thirty-four thousand eight hundred and one dollars.
Okay, what's, what about?
One of them was twenty thousand something. I mean, that's not even, if you.
That's not even two weeks payroll, I know what you're saying.
No, I mean, October of two thousand seventeen was twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars for twenty-one.
So I mean, if you just got a rough average of seventy or seven hundred meters at fifty bucks, that's thirty-five thousand, so something's already wrong. If you remember, if you remember right, the utility.
There were no. Thirty thousand of it is, is. There are no one of them that will look at that, thirty thousand of it is, is approximately what payroll is, so where's them? Oh, I'm talking every two weeks, so I'm saying at sixty thousand, where did the other thirty thousand come to make payroll? Because I'm assuming everybody got paid.
The month before that, the city collector quit, we lost the data and they had to start over, so they weren't collecting water bills is why October's low.
They were using the mouth.
But March should come up.
We don't get them the month after, which we've been November, fifty-five thousand.
Okay, I'll buy that, that, that makes sense, huh? There's your, there's an offset right there. I don't know the exact number, that, okay.
No, into July.
That would make sense.
July, that's for it. It's still not enough to make payroll, payroll's at sixty-five.
Yes.
Is that with liability, see?
Okay. Sixty-five enables us to pay our employees the taxes, loggers, did I say that right, lagers, loggers? Okay, so sixty-five is our safe zone, because if, say, there is anything going on, like emergencies where they get pulled into overtime, we can still pay all of our employees. Sixty-five is, right now, that's the magic number.
It's probably more than that if you figured in your work comp, but you're just figuring on a one-time or five annual payment too.
Well, once we have our accounting system for together, we'll be able to, you know, dig down into this and find out everything, but we need it electronic, the electronics, so that we can really narrow down any of those categories.
And that's, that's going to be very, very time-consuming, labor-intensive. And it's gonna take time, and I know people want answers, when we have the tax, what happened with money, it just doesn't come that fast.
And if you don't start with the right numbers, you'll never be right.
Well, we'll get there, but it's gonna take time, it's gonna take time.
Police Department report.
I'm gonna make you sweet.
You need a hundred thousand now?
First thing, uh, short, we, we kinda got behind the eight ball and we didn't get a proclamation done, uh, but I'd like to announce that this week is National Police Week, um, with tomorrow being Peace Officer Memorial Day, and that's important, or we wave a flag and we'll be at half staff, don't call me. Because it stays at half staff, the city fly a year round. Yeah, that's, that's. Another important note, our police vehicle is in a shop. Um, it overheated. But it's overheating because it's around twenty-four hours a day.
In a busted head gasket or?
We don't know yet, right now it's the electric cooling fan, we pulled one off of one of the white cars. Um, they're testing it to see what damage was done. They checked it thirty minutes after it was parked in Stipple, so they're trying to make sure before they release it back. Right now, there's no charge. Now to cover some brief numbers, I'll bore you a little bit, calls for service, I just wanna explain, you know, expound on what we talked about with officers and this and the other last time. Calls for service, January, we had two hundred sixty-one calls for service, that eight point, eight point six reports a day. February, two hundred ninety. March, three thirty-two. April, four thirty-three. So we went from eight point six reports a day to fourteen point eight reports a day. So, we're leading into the summer. So, it, it is picking up? And that's total calls for service, that encompasses everything, dog calls, nuisance calls, whatever might be, accidents.
Chief, has there been any interest since we restructured to the police department?
We have, I have had three since last week. Two, I've got my eyes on very close, uh, the folk Marine Corps veterans in the police academy in Columbia, Missouri, right now, wanting to relocate. So, uh, I'm in the process of vetting them right now, um.
How, how long do you expect to be before they graduate?
They graduate on August the tenth. The goal is, right now, for me, is I'm wanting to sponsor them through the academy, to where they can graduate, walk across the stage in Dixon uniform, and I've hidden advantage on that graduation.
Do they provide any type of mentorship program where they can come down here and?
Yes, I can, uh, per my S O P, I won't allow that until they've had weapons qualification.
I understand that.
Uh, for our liability reasons. Once they've had weapons qual, which is next week, I've invited them to come right along on Saturdays with the sergeants.
Good.
Hey, it gives me a feel for what I'm looking at, be, if we do hire them and offer employment, we're a step ahead in filtering.
Right.
I think the restructuring paid off.
And that was, that, that, um, you were speaking of two candidates that are in.
Two that are currently.
The other individual?
Third lives in Alabama and is a prior employee that wants to come back.
That's three houses, three houses possibly repotting this.
Very possible. Just some quick numbers. I did, I didn't balance these off of calls for service, but these are just cases we had filed in state court, with two domestic violence situations, four assaults. Uh, of those four, two were serious, one burglary, four larcenies. Our property crimes is reduced this time. Property crimes was just eight hundred and two dollars.
Well, good, maybe Marlene, your talk about the neighborhood watch program got out there.
Um, we are working. We are working one current counterfeiting forgery case, um, we had one vandalism, we've had six felony drug arrests in April. We wrote sixty-six traffic citations and issued seventy-seven warrants.
And those felony drug arrests, are you keeping them in the house or are you sending them to state?
State.
Good, thank you very much.
We can't keep felony.
Okay.
Recent law changes even have changed drug paraphernalia to a felony, classic felony.
Right.
So therefore, we are putting all, anything that is not marijuana goes to state.
Fits under thirty-five, first offense?
Correct.
Okay.
If it's under thirty-five, then we can keep it in state.
Mister Meehan, okay, good, that's what we need to be doing.
And we're working with some of those on other bigger, better partnerships.
Good.
So.
Good, 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 glad to hear that, good report.
And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Uh, Josh said that he'll be right back, he had to look at a water issue.
He's got a water leak that's.
You guys, in close session, do you want to?
Well, this is a German possession or legal.
So, since maintenance isn't here, I personally been taking a look at some of the stuff that they've been doing, and I know in the last two weeks, there has been a dramatic increase in the maintenance that's been happening around the city. Now, I don't know if any of you have been behind the school, I think it's Rosebud over by the elementary, am I, are my directions right?
No.
No, Rosebud is, oh, um.
No, help me out here.
Walnut?
Walnut, that sounds better, Dave, you were on, you were on it, there's a culvert that they found, how, how long has that culvert been buried?
That's Oak Street.
Oak Street, okay, Oak Street.
Seventh and Oak. It's been buried for years, years now.
Is it buried anymore?
No.
They put river rock in it and, uh, should solve a lot of the problems that they're having over there.
Awesome.
That's just one, that's just one area that I saw, one out of many, just over the last couple of weeks, and if you see the maintenance folks, you'll see that they have really picked it up these last couple of weeks.
How about?
Well, we have, we have a system that will bounce for it.
They've done more in two weeks than they've done in the last two years, no offense to these guys, that's just the fact.
They've been out there working.
Yeah, I know, they fixed, might be all theirs.
They have, they have a long list, they're working on it.
Twenty-six months.
Please note that we've had some issues with our, uh, mowing equipment, and that will come up in the budget because it's gotta be repaired. And so there may be a, there may be a pause in some of the mowing until we can get some stuff fixed, so please be patient, it's, it's coming. But overall, the maintenance, I would say, has done an outstanding job stepping up and really solving some of these issues that we have.
Yeah, you guys really have.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna make a motion to go into close session. For legal, real estate, and personnel matters.
I make a motion, I make a motion to go into close session.
Paul said.